Okay, it's on. Nobody's gonna be waiting.
What was the question?
Next week we have several budget meetings. We're gonna be, we have several things on the agenda. So I didn't know if you want to start the agenda earlier or if we keep it at nine because nobody's gonna be waiting on us. It's just us talking about budgets. Why we moved that today.
Yeah, we had a little bit of a transition.
Yeah. I'd rather leave them at nine, but if you go for them, I think Wednesday is getting pretty full then.
Wednesday the night?
Yeah, the night.
So is that a regular meeting then?
Well, actually Tuesday would've been just, I think Tuesday without somebody. So we're just Monday, Wednesday and...
So where are we at Tuesday?
Somebody figure it out, CJ. I think Chris, if you have your, you have the meeting. So we're both Monday, Wednesday, Thursday.
We should be done Monday.
Wishful thinking, Jeff.
We asked all the questions today. And we're all got the side in.
Okay, so Tuesday?
Did you get a new SUV?
Tuesday's out.
Yep.
You get one?
I'm meeting with...
I guess Wednesday.
Well, Wednesday, we can start Wednesday at 8:30?
That's Monday. So do you guys?
If we've got quite a bit on...
There's really not that much time.
I'm just saying I'm starting early.
I talked to her on Friday, last Friday, do it. And I apologize if I missed some questions.
All right.
Okay.
Are we going to light your pretty there or something?
Let's go back, let's get back in session.
I'll thank everyone else.
I don't think we ever did either. Okay. Mr. Schulte?
I'll start, you start again and I'll let Richard finish up the program, see what he got there. Nothing's really changed on my budget other than asking for another part-time employee, Richard. A sixteen-hour employee. One mistake I did make on it that I talked to Kristen about and I think Debbie about that I, that we talked about. We're gonna start having, we might have to get a phone to cover your plans that...
With the electronic monitoring, we have to have the capability on the weekend to have a phone for contact that we can pass around. So we have a consistent number that when the monitoring folks try to contact us, they can contact this one number. And so with several of us, I think, working on the weekends, handling the EM portion of it, it's just easier to have a phone that we can pass, one phone that we can pass.
The last two years, Richard and I have mainly been getting the weekends.
So it's just the two of you?
Yeah, but Holly, there's gonna be Holly, Hilkie, myself, my name's Sparky, and then it'll be on call, be one weekend a month. So these guys are only part-time employees and they won't be taking the weekend call.
Do you have a number here at the office, a phone, actual physical phone line?
Yeah.
Okay, can you do call forward on those? Can you call forward that to the number that is on call that weekend?
You probably could.
Like my office number?
If I, I can't answer that. Neil could answer that phone.
All right, I wanna give out other numbers. Have one number for them to contact, just like you would have with the cell phone number.
They are PRI ones?
But other than that, everything else in our budget is pretty much the same as it was before. I did put a little bit of boost to Bales miscellaneous because I'll be adding a camera to that room. It's a visiting room back there in the back of a Bens courtroom. You know, I'm talking, you walk down that hallway in the back by the, we had a secure facility. Won't put a camera in there because due to the fact that we're bringing prisoners up, you can't put the male and females both in those, that one holding cell back there. Doing putting the females in that visiting room, just gonna put a camera in there to dial females on the other end. That's, that's why I adjusted, there's a little money on the Bales miscellaneous. And Richard's gonna talk to you about the program with David doing.
What I basically gave you is just the statistical of what we've done over the time period. The first set of numbers kind of gives you the number of reports that we've done, the bed dates that we saved during those years and the total. The average risk score is, we assess each one of these individuals and assess a risk score. The risk score goes from one to twenty-three. A six is a moderate risk, it's the low-end moderate risk. The low risk is one to five. Six to thirteen is the moderate risk and thirteen to twenty-three is the top risk score. So you can kind of see the type of clientele we're dealing with for the most part. It's right around that moderate range of individuals. It's kind of what we suspected because most of the low-risk individuals are the people that are making bonds. They've got support, they've got people in the community that can come in and help them with a bond situation. You can see the bond reductions. As you can tell, the bond reductions are down this year and I think part of that is more use of the PTS supervision. But that's kind of where that's fallen right now. You can see the total number of bed days just on the bond reductions and then the PTS supervision, those are the ones that we're doing. Right now, we've, over the little over two years, we've had one-hundred-and-sixty-nine that we have supervised. Right now, we have fifty-nine on the program that we're actively supervising. The average risk score of those folks are seven point one. Out of this one-hundred-and-sixty-nine that we've supervised, we've had six failure to appear over the little over two-plus years. We've had fifteen condition violations. Those can be anything from use of drugs, failure to report, where we'll actually ask the judge to come in and take some type of action against the individual. We may bring them in, lock them up for a period of time, let them back out. That's something that we're able to do with this. And then out of that total of one-hundred-and-sixty-nine, we've had five that have been on charges or had a laws violation while we have, while they were under supervision. We've had ninety-five people that have gone through the program and been successful and bond released by the court.
The six failure to appear is five of those men we've caught. We just got one out now in the last three weeks.
Is that six out of fifty-nine or six out of one-hundred-and-sixty-nine?
Six out of the one-hundred-and-sixty-nine. Five of those we caught, we hit about three-week period. We got one out right now.
Do we have an active role in these bond reductions or, I mean, do you guys work with?
What we do is when I do a report, basically what I suggest to the court is a, a bond reduction or PTS. And so it's up to them. The judge makes the final decision on what occurs with them. And so that's, you know, that's their prerogative.
So you make a recommendation to the court, whatever, to reduce bond or, or to supervise under you guys?
Yeah.
So in four months, five months of thirteen, all of fourteen, and eleven months, ten months of fifteen. Well, just a little over two years. We've looked at seven-hundred-and-thirty-two people.
Well, I think if you, if you look at just the snapshot right now, we got fifty-nine we're supervising right now on PTS. That's not even the bond reductions. You add that to your jail population. That's, that's where you would be.
I mean, the total number of bed days saved is almost forty-one thousand?
Yes. And if you look at that bottom, the PTS supervision, you'll notice that the numbers up there aren't the same as the numbers up top. That's because this, like the 2013, that's the total number of how, so they may scan 2013, 2014, 2015, but they, they initiated in 2013. And so that's why that bed day total is almost double. All we added up there is what it was from, the bed days from the August first date to the January one date of fourteen, that two-thousand-and-eighty. And if you look down here, that forty-five-eight-five, that's the total that they span all during the time period. Some of them I've had on for over two years, so it just depends on their cases.
So how do you figure, if I always look at 2013, I mean, how do you figure the number of bed days? Because I mean, there could be a lot of other factors that come into play as far as, you know, you got somebody out, maybe you're on PTS or maybe they're on a bond reduction, but I mean, would that person typically just sit in jail for indefinitely?
Well, I can't tell you.
Right.
I mean, what I do is, is from date of his release to date of either bond release, arrest, termination. That's how I count those days.
Could he been out or got under a, would the judge maybe have let him out later on? Sure.
I, I can't anticipate.
So I said we've got, what, over a hundred bail bondsman in Southern Missouri? And it's like, and it's like, I had a guy and he's acting to the army at Fort Hunter Wood and he's a bail bondsman here. I'm like, how the hell do you do that?
It's, it's nothing for the, the right, both guys to write fifteen bonds that they are in there. So also during the court process, kind of like, he's got a mouth PTS. If they've been in court four, five, six times and they've been showing that, sometime the judges have talked to him, they'll let him off the PTS program, answer that and I strip them of bond.
You've only had six failed to appear out of one-hundred-and-sixty-nine, that's like less than four percent. That's, that's pretty damn good because I would bet you the ones that bond out, I'll bet you got a higher percentage who don't show up.
I'll tell you. I mean, the average is about, most programs that I've seen is fourteen percent.
Yeah, so...
So I think the calling in has been a big thing for us.
You've only got six out of one-hundred-and-sixty-nine, that's...
Actually, five, all five of those are back in.
Yeah.
I guess I, I guess I don't understand this as far as it relates to, we have two part-time employees and we also have this pre-release budget item, which annually is about sixty thousand altogether. So tell me, we're saving forty-one thousand over three years or what, states in jail that we would've had these people? Am I reading this right?
What, what I'm saying is, is that in, let's say for an example, let's go 2014 because that's a complete year. The bed days on that you had was fifteen thousand one-hundred-and-seventy-four. So whatever calculation you want to use for what a bed day costs you, that would be your save.
What do we use there? Fifty? Probably higher than that.
Well, I talked to Victor, Victor said they've been housing around thirty-five federal prison after they're leased people.
Right.
So...
Well, I don't know what we get for federal prison for that.
From the state, we get twenty?
No.
From the state, federal?
Oh, I'm sorry, not federal, the state.
I thought it was...
What do we get from the federal government?
Well, that was sixty-five, yeah.
Six or seven, look.
Could be wrong. It just depends on what kind of charge they're here for. Obviously, these are tied, they're with federal prison.
So these, these people...
The ones we're doing, I've got robbers in common. I mean, we've got, the judges have, I mean, we've got, I've interviewed murderers, I've done every one. I mean, basically, they've asked me to do evaluations on all types of offenses, sex offenders. So, and then they make the final choice on what they want to do as far as the release. The other thing I think that's good for the program is, is the identification for different type of programs, like the drug court program, the veterans' court program. Drug, we can get them in there a little quicker, that saves some time and some resource and money. The other thing we've been doing is helping people with high-risk issues, mental health issues. We've got people in placements in mental health facilities to help them basically take the strain off the criminal justice system and put them in the mental health system.
We're not gonna transport between seven PM and seven AM.
Would you say that this program has helped the sheriff house more federal inmates?
Well, here's, here's what I would say about that. There is a staffing level where you have a, a level of staffing for your population. Now, whatever your population is, I would say that level of staffing, you're not gonna exceed that level of staffing. If you do, there's potential problems there, whether it be litigation or, or other issues. But as far as the population between federal and these folks...
Well, I mean, there's only a certain population that we can house over there. I mean, we got X number of beds. So if, if all these people are in the beds, then we can't house federal inmates. And so if our cost is fifty dollars per bed for these guys and we're getting sixty-five dollars to house a federal inmate, I mean, we're a hundred and fifteen dollars to the good.
Ever since, no wonder we're allowed to house so many.
I realize that, but I mean, instead of it costing us fifty bucks, we just made sixty-five dollars, so that's, you have to add those two. I mean, it doesn't cost you anymore, yet you're actually making money on it rather than it cost you.
Well, by doing this, you're gonna open up beds that we can house federal prisoners if we get them, but that's not your...
Well, the other thing I think you're seeing with this program is you're integrating people back in and getting them, almost all my people are working. That's amazing to me because when we first started, there were not a lot of jobs. And now, almost every one of my people are working.
Well, if you're saving those fifty dollars a day per person, it, that, we're, we're ahead of the game there too, Chris.
Well, a lot of those costs are, they're gonna be there whether you house five prisoners or one prisoner.
Well, sure. I mean, you have a fixed cost to run the facility. I think it's a great program. I mean, I think it's done, done wonders.
Well, labor, I mean, if you had a higher population, you'd have to have more labor. So there's a labor cost there too.
The only thing we changed on that is adding the part-time female to help them keep up the phone. And the only thing I got on, on my budget is different from last year with the murder trial that's coming up. We got one arranged for April. And I talked to Chris and Debbie both about it. We stuck it off to the side because we're not very sure if it's gonna go or not. BETA went and set the first part of April. But I think that trialer who asked for continuous on, but then one of the other guys filed a hundred and eighty grit. So I got a funny feeling we'll be doing him a neighbor. So it's still a murder trial, it's gonna be a neighbor, be another Capitol trial. And that'd be where we have to house and sequester jury and take care of them.
Where do you have that in here, Don?
That's below super good and tools, about the middle of it. We thought we were gonna have two in 2016, but it looks like two are gonna go back to two thousand. Two are gonna be back, be back to 2017. Pass that, Herschler, fifth way in 2017 and...
Professional services?
So that actual cost for jury trials and things is in the court supervision budget?
Oh, I don't know.
Only I have to budget mine is for the personnel, the part-time personnel that I have to use directly because that's gonna be separate from my vacations with the other guys and stuff like that. And that's why I settled at thirty thousand because I didn't know how long, how many. Hope the defender told me it's gonna take ten, ten to fourteen days. Mark, Chris, who tells me six to eight. So I don't wanna take any chances.
So how many people will you have worked in your PTS program then?
I have myself and one other individual. And then since, no, I'm sorry, since the first of November, we've had one part-time person that's been helping us with the statistics of dying entry in that time.
One thirty, our employee, Richard's thirty, which is twenty-four, and she was sixteen.
So you have three in...
Yeah, she's only been there, you all let me pay her under my part-time basis, I don't use my money for years.
So three part-timers?
Three part-timers, all we got, yeah.
Three part-timers.
Then you're going four part-timers going forward or...
He wants to keep her on.
They want to keep that part time.
They like to keep her with... She's also helping Larry Henry with some of his dad entry on the, on the drug court programs and stuff too. So she's, has, you know, quite a few nights he's helped.
I'm good, but I think it saves us a ton of money and it's helping us to, the sheriff definitely on, on federal dollars he can generate, so maybe he should pay for it.
So you need us?
Yeah, you're good.
Thank you.
We're still gonna try to work around you on windows too.
That's fine, we'll work...
And that with your trials and stuff.
You're done.
Okay.
Make a copy of that here.
Thanks, sir. Hey, give me a golden round. Did you guys mention that?
Thank you.
No, Peter's gonna help me, I already have him to take care of that whole program. All you gotta do is take care of the jury and everything else. The jury's on it.
Court services is eight seventy.
All you gotta do is order, I'm paying for it. Oh, okay. If you have a duty for release program, all you gotta do is jury.
Hey, John?
Yeah.
Hey, guys.
Got more in than I've had. Close enough. Good day.
It's somewhere, it's still morning.
There you go.
It might even be tomorrow, so...
All right, one fifty-one.
No, fifty-three.
Long day.
Got anything different from what the budget officer gave you?
I, I miscalculated a, a line on equipment thing, that's why I'm not quite sure I did it. I've got, the only thing you do out of, that I do out of equipment maintenance is to handle software maintenance agreements and service contracts on the court reporters' equipment. That's really all that comes out of there. If something breaks down, it's, that's gonna be unexpected, but I've got three contracts at five-eighty-eight and three service contracts that, I don't remember, five-eighty-eight times three are seventeen-sixty-four. And then I've got three service contracts on their machines that total five-hundred-and-twenty-five. So I really should've put something like twenty-three-hundred dollars in there and I really only put two. And the budget officer put it down to sixteen-fifty, so really I, I don't...
Where have you made those out of the previous junior specific business? In fourteen, you only paid six thirty. Here's the transfer, here's your question, to be able to pay that equipment maintenance this year. And we used to travel, so we might want to talk about that. Yeah, but as far as court reporters, five-eighty-eight times three, or has that been paid out in the past year? I heard of a team.
I'm guessing I paid two of them together and then one of them, well, this one here came in later. And the only other, other difference I have is, is the hall combined meeting travels and dues. It's always been set at six thousand and even before I, I got here, we seem to go over that by quite a bit. Last year in December, I went over by sixteen, seventeen hundred. Had to do one of these transfers again. All my dues comes out of there, subscriptions comes out of there, and if the judges travel, comes out of there. So it's kind of, I don't know where they're traveling or what they're gonna do beforehand. I got some set fees that they, that they incur. Their, their dues to the Supreme Court, sixteen-hundred-and-forty. The court reporter's dues is three-hundred-and-fifteen and three-hundred for their state dues. They have some memberships, a total of four-hundred-and-fifty and two subscriptions of three-hundred-and-fifty-seven, I think they're two-hundred-and-ninety-nine, two-hundred-and-ninety-nine each. That's, that's the usual annual expenditures out of there that happen every year. So other than that, the rest of it is, if the judges go on some sort of conference, BETA went to a Capitol murder case conference down in New Orleans, that was sixteen-hundred-and-forty dollars. Pat went to one this year, but that came out of Larry Henry's budget this time, so we didn't, we didn't incur that. So basically, that's, that's the only two real differences I had. I had miscalculated on the equipment maintenance and, and it seems every year we're, we'll go over a six-thousand-dollar limit on meeting travel dues, so...
Guess I'm a little taken back by all this. I mean, we got judges who are state employees and why we even pay any of their dues, I have no idea. I mean, that's totally backwards. And, or why would we even pay any of their travel? I mean, that's, they're state employees, if they wanna travel, the state should reimburse them. I mean, we provide the building, we provide all this other stuff, and yet we're, we just keep getting tagged for all this other stuff and it's, we have no control over it. I mean, I, I don't wanna make a big deal out of it, but I mean, I just, I just don't feel like that we should, I mean, the juries, I mean, we're, we're paying that. I mean, I guess that's the way it's always been done. We get reimbursed for any of that?
A very small portion.
Yeah. So, I mean, we're, we're putting the bill and yet, you know, if it was our employees, yeah, we'd pay for the travel. But I don't know, I just want, I just, I don't believe that we should be paying their dues, I mean, or for their travel. I mean, that's, if they wanna go to a meeting, you know, the state should pay that.
Well, actually, quite a bit of these dues actually go to the Supreme Court, actually. I guess be, be supplementing themselves. Well, I, I, that, that argument happens, well, it's been happening for hundreds of years now, I think, which is why the, I mean, we kind of, we kind of confuse the state, state courts with county function. I, I mean, because everything we do, we, I'm paid by the state, the judges are paid by the state and we have OSC that, that keeps the uniformed procedures and that sort of thing. But really, it's a county function. Each county has its own, has its own courts. We, of course, have judges that don't travel, but some do, but they all handle, handle court in each county because, because of the crime that happens in the county. But, and that, that argument has come up since their county budgets. Most everything is paid by the state, but, you know, some things are specific to each set judges.
So I guess most county departments, we have held a line pretty strong on not increasing their meeting travels and dues much. Most departments only have enough money to travel to their local associations, annual meeting or, you know, local meetings and things. We have kind of seen the budget as our way to kind of restrict the judges because they go to national conferences and, and things like that. If I keep their budget at six thousand, here's what you have to spend. Try and plan your meetings accordingly. I know that they have gone over in the past. I mean, we really don't have any way of controlling it. I mean, you...
Apparently, these fights, disagreements or whatever with county, county government and, and the judicial, like I said, has been going on for a long time. There's actually, you know, quite a number of statutes that restrict the county's control over the, over the courts. And I guess there's been fights along the way and why those have been in there. In fact, I thought it was interesting, it on page...
It's in there.
Six, right there, basically.
It also has a deadline of when you're supposed to come in.
Bring in, bring in budgets and, and... Bring in, bring in budgets and, and over them and, and, you know, and they work out, work out what everybody needs, but, you know, we're not, we're not spending a whole lot of extravagant money here. We, you know, other than a couple conferences, and like I said, I only did one, we only did one last year, that really, most everything else is, you know, judges and court reporters' dues and some subscriptions to some of the magazines that they get that kinda keep them up to date on some things, so, I mean, it's not too awfully far out of line.
And their court reporters? I mean, I remember years back, we didn't pay anything for court reporters, and now all of a sudden, we're paying all their machine fees, their maintenance fees, their dues and everything. I mean, is that something that's changed, or I'm sure that's handled very differently in other courts?
I, I couldn't tell you, but I think, I think they've been, they, their, their expenses have been added in before. I don't think I was the first one to handle equipment maintenance. I mean, that, that's been in here for a while, but, yeah, they've got a couple of them in here that I, I don't think, or to their, that they need to be able to do their jobs. They have the license, so I've added those in, just like the judges have had their Supreme Court licenses, but they also have state ones, which they kinda require, but they also have a, a national one, which doesn't do any of us any good. They don't have to have it to do their jobs, so we don't include it in the, in the accounts anymore.
My contention would be is, if it's a function of county government, let the county handle all of it, let's collect, let the county collect everything and let the county pay the judges. And so, it's our building, they're in it, we collect all the fees and we disperse it how, how we feel, how we see fit, but that's a whole different argument, but, you know, to pay all the money to the state, let the state do what they want, you know, it's just a, it's a waste of dollars, is what it is, so, but anyway, we can discuss them later. I'd like to keep the, I think the travel dues at six thousand. If they need more money, they probably have it somewhere where they can take it out of their own funds.
So you're asking that it be the eight thousand, eight hundred is what you're asking?
I asked it right now. I guess, on that line, if you're wanting more, you can itemize it all out and say where it's all going, then we can, we can go through and nitpick them and say, well, we don't think we should pay for this one, we don't think we should pay for this one, and then, and then argue from that point of view. But as soon as we put eighty-eight hundred in there, then it's gonna be used. We can argue about whether that's an operation expense or not. So we talked about it next week or whatever, then.
Give the.
Are we basically saying no right now, but going back to Thursday, saying we're just gonna leave it at six?
We'll, we'll talk about it.
Let's talk about it.
I don't know if you guys want to talk about that transfer, I don't have some questions about it. Taking money out of jury script, which, we've never really done that before. Jury script is kind of a in-out, we all do it for that particular purpose. He's wanting to transfer out of there, 'cause there is extra budget money in there to, for meetings and travel and for this other five eighty-eight maintenance on the court reporter's machine. So I, I guess, do you already have bills that add up to that?
Yeah, that's exactly what.
So has he spent twelve thirty-six, or?
Currently?
Yeah. Eleven maintenance.
About three, maybe four.
So that's not accurate.
How much?
Spent sixteen fifty. What did you tell them?
He has nothing available. He's zero. He's spent, yeah. So what did you say you think your equipment maintenance should be for next year?
Twenty-two eighty-nine is what the contract extended. Every quarter.
And is there a way to pay them more often?
They don't want to. I ask. It's, it's, each, each quarter is a new pool, and I break each pool into two six-week periods. So I have one pool here, I have one pool here, when they come in for orientation, I just tell them, they're not gonna get paid until the end of the pool, so.
They're off to pay it.
Whatever, December, January, so the, the next one will, I'll submit, submit them shortly after the end of January.
The only hard part for us is at the end of the year, you're two months behind that you're paying in twenty sixteen's budget or twenty fifteen's.
I mean, I, I can, I can submit on that, on that first six week period.
That might be helpful, then you would only be like two weeks behind instead of two months behind.
Yeah. Hey, the, the figure in the budget's made a lot of the time.
It's just as far as recording the table that you're in, we're recording quite a big table, because we have to have support.
Yeah, that's true. Yeah, I do, biggest, finest part, submit that.
Do they, never, other people transfer or not, or stuff?
It's just, I'm not that accustomed to that. I know it's just budget money, I just don't want the party to skip it for them. Maybe do it this time, 'cause otherwise, it's gonna come out of our contingency.
You're used to what?
The first six weeks.
November, yeah.
Jury money.
For December.
Pay for meetings and travel.
You can do that and not have to pay for them, and then.
Well, you get that part of the dollar there.
We keep it in what we need to.
That's no different than taking it out of, you know, something out of mileage and putting it, or out of office supplies and using it to pay for mileage. Once we give them a pot of money, then they can transfer it from there.
Right, well, this is in your control. You sign it or you don't?
If we all sign it, then it has to get paid for.
Can we tax your taxes?
So we're paying for it either way.
Well, we've, we've refused to sign transfer before.
What's on that one? Equipment maintenance?
I'd rather see him spend it out of jury script than out of our contingency.
Yeah. We're gonna go over on jury then?
No, if that line comes, we catch up and pay some.
We're gonna run into the same thing next year, so this really doesn't fix anything.
Well, he's asking for an increase on equipment maintenance.
Did you go for an increase on it? Because the way it sounds, I, I really wasn't leaning towards increasing it at all.
Okay, we're gonna discuss.
Well, let's discuss it right now with John here, if you've got more questions or if you want, I mean, or if we discuss it next week or we decide now. Wanna talk about it some more next week, that's fine, just by yourself. I, I don't mind having John here so we can sit and go, well, what are you gonna use it for specifically? A line item?
So your twenty-two, twenty-two eighty-nine in equipment maintenance is what, again, it's the five eighty?
Well, it's a three, it's a three software maintenance group, so it's a five eighty-eight piece, and then service contracts on their actual machines are five twenty-five, five twenty-three.
Are those our machines?
Court reports. We bought some of those, someone will have them, I'm not sure where they are.
Well, I mean, we got them, if I'm paying for them, we got them.
They're only two.
But hopefully we got them on branch or something.
There might be three.
I mean, are they ours? Do they have a county sticker on them?
Some of them are, we signed one.
'Cause if they don't have county sticker, I'm worried paying maintenance on them. Is that, is that an operation of the courts?
So they have to, maybe all the.
I don't know, this is an old argument, but you look at all the court cases, and it says state of the jury versus somebody else. I don't think we're picking on you right now, John, I think it's more of a state thing. I'm speaking for myself.
You guys have always done this argument, this, this, this has gone down since the beginning of time.
The counties and states have always been fighting about funds.
I know.
The state doesn't want to pay anything, but they wants to do everything.
I mean, we make the argument that, you know, it's a state court and all this, you can turn around and make the argument, if you had to run the state court, it costs you two million dollars in salaries. I mean, it goes on and on. I mean, guys, I'm handling the jury by statute. You guys are supposed to have a jury supervisor, and you guys pay it. So the glass is half full, not half empty. I mean, there's money being saved all the way around, somewhere. I mean, it costs to do, it costs to do courts. I mean, people commit crime, but they made, they've made it a statewide thing to, to keep it all, you know, it's a term I wanted to use, everybody's making the same kind of decisions, and, and the costs get lower if they can, if they can streamline, you know, softwares and, and that's where.
Well, their cost gets lower if they pass it to the counties.
Does the state pay any of the travels for the judge or court reporter?
Not, not a court reporter, no. I don't, so there's, there's something. I mean, I used to have it in college, and you just.
We could get a jury supervisor and trade it for all this other stuff.
And they, they pay my travel and stuff.
One employee, one FD, we'll trade it for.
Oh, God.
I love it.
Hey, you guys just gotta, you really gotta remember that, that, yeah, the state's doing a whole lot here, and, and the judges are paid by them and everything, but it, it is really a county function. I mean, everybody I bring in here and send that summons to that, that is a juror, is a taxpaying, voting member of Cole County. They can't be of anything else, they gotta be in Cole County, so, paying.
But they're being asked to serve on the jury by the state in the case that they have, right?
Well, it's state versus Joe Blow, but, but the state is.
We can mark here all day.
I mean, it's Mark Richardson. I mean, they say the state, but it's a state statute that they're probably violating, but I'm, I just, I mean, I don't.
It doesn't matter what we sign on this, if we sign it, we wouldn't pay it. It can happen next year, even if we leave this amount at six thousand, we'll be signing this in December next year again. It happened last year, in December too. I, I ended up not having enough money to cover all subscriptions and, and that sort of thing before. I, I mean, I wouldn't mind seeing an itemized list of what the whole expense was for that. We're talking eighty-eight hundred dollars here, well, six thousand or eighty-eight hundred dollars. A nickel and a diamond, but.
I'll come back.
Let's do that.
Right, send it to us.
Yeah, I mean, if you can justify the eighty, eighty-eight hundred, John, it's stuff they need to do, and we feel like it is our responsibility to pay for it.
He's going on with the New Orleans, too.
No. I might not come back. Actually, y'all might get a lot of friends out of it.
We used to be called judges, we.
I don't know if I can handle it.
We have New Orleans, too.
Get our people on some off.
I'll come back next weekend, get some items.
You can email it too, John, just for us to browse through or whatever.
Not a big deal. Um, I, I don't know exactly what all Donnie said, the, the numbers I put in here for jury script don't really include any major court cases. Dave was talking about capital, capital murder cases that, it looked like they were gonna have three next year, and now it doesn't look like we're gonna have any of them. There is still a, a major product liability case that's on the books for next year. It was actually on the books for this year, and Judge Green mentioned he's got, what he thinks is a fun form trial sometime next year. I'll put those in. They can, they can be expensive, but then again, if they aren't, you know, they aren't showing up, it gets you guys all worried when I throw a big number in there.
Which line was?
When Hosier, when Hosier came in, that, that, that case came in, we had to sequester the jury, a capital murder case, and that sort of thing, and it ran into about thirty thousand dollars.
So if we do, if we have the three cases that you thought we were gonna have, we're sixty-five covered?
No.
No.
I'll just come back, but, you know, I'm not gonna put them in there. Maybe we have this year.
We got juries on the phone. No big case.
We got some big ones, we got some big ones coming up, is what I've heard from your judges, it's, it's.
We spent fifty-one for all just regular jury trial funding.
They do, they say that every year, and then it gets settled.
Well, we got that big, big one. When I first came in, we had like ten jury trials in eight weeks, and then this last quarter, we had two. I think I had a jury trial scheduled for every Monday, and I only had two.
Yeah.
You know, there's supposed to be a trend, less and less jury trial that happens in Cole County because of everything we end up getting here.
Yeah, they always seems like they're one to get us ready for the worst possible scenario, and they usually kinda take us off, so.
Well, it always looks nice when they do.
They play guilty. Don't, don't tell jurors that it's because of us, we don't have the trolleys, just don't say anything.
San Elizabeth had trolleys this weekend. Man, we need to come around. I don't know, they had a whole big shindig down there. I gotta go to other counties for entertainment, Sam.
Elliot, you up?
I'm up.
Nice job.
Should've been shopping downtown, Jeff.
Eighty twenty-nine, Department one thirteen.
No changes, Larry?
All right. Okay. I might have to do some transfers, he has a bank charges going up significantly for next year or four.
I don't know, I was close. I don't have yours in here, so you don't have any money.
He offers to pay for everybody.
Twenty-nine in the book, or one thirteen in the department.
I'm quick. I don't have twenty-nine in here in the table of lessons.
Two minutes.
Okay, try twenty-eight.
Why does it say county point goes over the limit?
What changes you got, Larry, anything?
No changes, but as I said, the only thing I, I may need to do is transfer some funds, more funds into bank charges, out of another line item, or I'm sure we'll be under in some areas.
This year?
For next year, for twenty sixteen, because most of those charges, one of the fees they put on there that is a, the check has two signatures, and all our checks require that two signature.
I think I saw that.
And we'll have a bunch of them that are issued in December that they won't, won't show up until our January billing because of refunds on tax, due to the tax payments or overpayments and things like that, so.
So whenever you know, we can go ahead and talk about that, because your budget is unique, bottom line can't change, so if you need more in there, just let me know what we're talking about, before we get to approve the budget.
Are you gonna pick that out of though?
I'd say, whatever you get. Printing and financing.
What are you talking about?
Balance is budget.
Professional services, probably.
Okay.
Would be my guess.
I didn't change a lot of mine, but we're.
Professional services.
You got about thousand seven fifteen professional services extra, you could put an eighty-three thousand, nineteen ninety, two, three thousand, two thousand and fifty, I mean, there's a little here and there.
Just let me know, 'cause I'd rather get it fixed, and I don't know, you know, that's gonna happen.
Well, Dave and I haven't met yet, so I'm hoping it's not gonna happen.
Oh, okay.
But if it does, it's, it's probably gonna, I forget, it could, I don't think it'd be more than a thousand dollars.
Oh.
I just think it's ridiculous.
Okay. Oh, good. Thanks, Larry.
Thanks, Larry.
You can do all this in 10 houses with all these people.
Do you all need a break or anything?
I don't know.
Well, I'm going to start mine with saying this, remember, I'm 10 weeks and one day out of prostate surgery, and if I got to get up and go to the bathroom, I'm getting up and going to the bathroom, and I'll take over.
Page 105, fund $600.
What do we get? 105, 600? We can just go 600, huh?
Yeah, fund 600, no department. That'll give you everything.
Division, five division?
No.
All...
Other than the talking, other than the following talking points, we accept what Kristen's done. Okay, that was easy, counting talking points. And revenue stream is in federal revenues, personal revenues, 600-704-43208.001. Kristen submitted $780,000. We had, we had submitted in our initial budget, $840,000. I think Kristen's just trying to be conservative with it, and we think it's probably going to be higher than the $840,000, but we need to, that's just a statement. Expense lines, three areas. On the 911 system, we put in the standard $292 that we've done, and the auditor and the rest of the $185,233 to it. It would have helped us in budgeting if we would have known that in advance, so we didn't assume that we were going to be paying that this time, instead of coming from general revenues and asking a statement. Heads up's good, always good. Jail overtime, we requested 65, Kristen put in 60, we can live with that, we think. This year, with the hospital stays, we know that that was pretty significant, and we, we planned for a certain amount, but we don't know what we're going to get, and if we, and if it goes up like it did this year, the bottom line is, we have to, we have to take inmates to the hospital, we have to guard them when they're in the hospital, and we have to bring them back. It's just, it's what we have to do, it's not an option. It's just like on prescription drugs, we do the best to figure it out, but if we get a number of people that are HIV positive, and it's $4,500 per person per month, it's $4,500 per person per month, and we have no option in it. Actual expenses, as of 11/21/15, will be $89,008, $35,79, and we've got one more bi-weekened period to be added for the rest of the budget, so, you know, we're, we're, we'll be over $90,000 out of the $60,000 budget. And again, you all know why we sat here and had that discussion. 2014, we spent $60,172, 2013 was 46,391, 2012 was 68,368, and looking at those numbers, it was reasonable for us to ask for the 65 last year. It's reasonable that you gave us the 60, but again, sometimes we get those inmates, and that's what's going to happen when we get them. You know, if you could, jails are one of the most difficult things that a county, that a county has to do, and we sit here with it, we've got, we've got a decent prison population, we've got great revenue stream from the federal prisoners, that's just been excellent. Nevertheless, there's going to be issues. The transports, I think we have a handle that this test period works. I think we have a pretty good handle on the mental transports, which is helping on this a lot right now. We'll see what happens when they get a heart burst at the hospital, or we, where we go with it, but so far, it looks like it may work. Inmates come to us, sicker than a dog, and we don't have an option whether we take an inmate or not. If they have a legitimate charge on them, we have to accept them. When they're in our care, we're bound by law to provide adequate medical care for them. Medicare stops at the door to the jail, not in prison. You know, they still get money set aside for that, that we would, that we can't touch, but in jails, we can't touch Medicare. Most of our inmates do not have insurance of their own, and we'll see how this affordable healthcare shakes out, but I suspect that for the most part, it's going to stop at the door. If it doesn't, that's going to be a benefit to us, but as of yet, it stops at the door. So I just don't have any good answers for you on that. We did have in our budget, as Kristen has continued the budget, thank you, Kristen, an extra detective and three extra jailers. Our detectives are overwhelmed with cases, and jailers, well, we're, from what the Citizens' Board that put this whole thing together for the, for the new jail, they had, they had eight more jailers listed that we needed than we've got, and the result of not having them is skyrocketing over time because we don't have people on staff to pull for those things. So while I would like to ask for the rest of the eight that, when this whole thing was accepted, we were supposed to have, we're asking for three of them right now, and I believe Kristen agrees with the mindset and the budget for that. The biggest issue to deal with holistically is talking about salary increases. Compression within our ranks is a very difficult thing. We've got some paperwork we're going to hand out to you on that, Phil.
Give me a verbal sunshine request.
I take a verbal sunshine request from only Robert Watson, not if you bring him over here, we don't think that... I don't think anybody wants that.
Well, we, we had put in, we had put in some figures of what we would like to do, and what we've, and then after talking with, with Kristen and some of you guys, what we're doing is, on this proposed salary increase, is we're doing Deputy One, Deputy Two, Deputy Three, all the way through Deputy Nine, and basically what it does is, certain persons, like, when you come off probation, a 1% increase at four years, 3%, at seven years, 3%, all the way up, and I take it up to 25 years, we don't have to be 25-year people. Higher incentives, and the ability to hire people that already have training and expertise is a wonderful thing. You know, if you came to us with, well, years of service, years of military service, associate's degree, bachelor's degree, we've got incentives where we can bring a person in at a higher starting salary. We've got bases listed in the nice colored part that Betsy put together, and so what we've done is we've submitted this as a, as a budget plan for salaries to move forward, and I'm going to tell you what that will cost. If it's implemented on the first of the year, that's $241,695.75. But it puts us in a position where we don't have compression, and it puts us in a position that we're beginning to reward the people for the work that they're actually doing. The difficulty that we've always got as a county is we've gone through salary study after salary study, and we adopted one, and we implemented that one, but then we didn't take it to what it was supposed to go on each year progressing after that. We didn't, we didn't accept that. And then last year, when the public works got their salary raise in December, we looked at that, and we told you then that we'd be coming back this year with a plan, and we came back with one plan, and I don't think Kristen was real comfortable with the way that plan looked, so we talked, and we came back with this one, and I hope this one looks better to you.
Did that look good?
So, and I also recognize that it's really hard for you guys to look at it in one little piece right now and try to tell me something wonderful about it, but we also don't mind coming back if you have questions that come up in the next few days. I know there's been some talk about why do you need additional people, and we're prepared to answer any of those questions if you want.
So without going into names, could we look at the safety?
Sure.
So...
I mean, we've all got it in front of us, and it's...
That's fine. Yeah, but just could, could we go through the very first one, and not mention any names, but just...
First person on the list?
Yeah, just go through your logic there, and what, what you're, because I see a lot of stuff here, and I don't get it bad up, so...
Okay.
I mean, you got 2015 yearly salary, you have $43,196.
Yes.
And so, and I see a 2016 salary of $46,646.
Right, you've got a base, the base would change, right where the salary was, the next one is the base, and the new base would be $43,594. But then you've got that person's, where they would be status-wise with, with years and all that kind of good stuff added into it that we talked about in these two sections here and here, and that takes his base up, not his base, it takes his, his salary up based on what he's brought to the table. The base is still the $43,594, $46.
Then you just add all these Deputy One, Deputy Two, Deputy Three...
Again, if you were, you know, Shepherd Lee had been here 800 years.
Right. That's the other Shepherd.
Yes. The guy who's old enough to be your grandpa, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
And then what's the stipends that are being?
Stipends, you know, we pay, rather than supply cell phones for supervisors, if you're on SWAT, if you're a detective, things like that, there's a stipend.
Okay, that just kind of gets it in a nutshell. I assume you have all, all your people listed here for different?
We do.
Got your day look on here, it's up to you.
We do, yes, all the way through. We also, we also have, all of the evaluations, all of our, our annual evaluations are done with the exception of the lieutenants and the captain and the administrative officer, but they will be done by the end of the month.
So the big question, I guess, just trying to look through this as quickly as possible, got years of service here, it's...
And by the way, the new financial program that we've got makes this a whole lot easier to get on it.
Your sergeants depend really well.
You know, we, we have a lot of very good people.
And lieutenants, too.
Yeah, they all wanted to come today, can't figure it out. Actually, they were told to come, but...
So this is just a total salary adjustment that has nothing to do with COLA, merit?
Nope.
Okay. So, I mean, a lot of people are getting nothing, it's like, for very little.
Depends where the base is, and, and there's a point where that, that it's got to be okay, depending on where you are, and of course, if you're part-time, you're not going to get it unless we adjust the entire part-time structure, because all part-time makes the same thing, except for the hours they work. The other problem that we've got on the, on the full-time jail versus part-time is a part-time person finds it very easy to pick up the phone and go, I can't make it in. My primary job, I'm sick, kid's birthday, can't make it in. A full-time person is certainly more dedicated to that regular paycheck, and we're scraping the barrel on getting part-time people. It's hard to get enough to even go through the process.
Five, five...
Pardon me?
Total of five, apply options?
Yeah. They go through a hard process, and you only have approval of five people.
Okay, I don't know that I'll get every question answered today. I've got to absorb all this.
I know, there's a lot of stuff, and part of the problems, I was gone until last night, and I had to do the final stamp for trouble this morning.
Okay, what else?
Janice Wheeler's in surgery right now.
Okay.
If anything else comes up, feel free to send us an email, call us, have us come back over, we're good.
Everybody's rough the troops, and I don't want to talk.
Their purpose for being here is if you had questions specific to their areas.
Okay.
As, as Betsy, you know, I'm, I'm the overall guy.
Right.
Betsy is the budget queen for us, and these guys are the heads of their, in essence, departments.
Right.
And we've got, I mean, you consider, I mean, it's larger than a lot of other offices and departments in that.
Larger than, larger than a lot of other counties.
Yeah. On the other side of it, so is our population.
Yeah, true.
I pointed out that we did it, and we were done in six minutes till the next person.
There you go.
Would've done it better if Larry didn't take our time.
Make sure you tell them.
I will. Kristen, we really do appreciate it. If we agree with that, thanks, I'm wrong.
That's right, that's right.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. I don't know if I want to get up yet, I'm comfortable.
Oh, yeah.
This is the most pleasant one I've ever had.
It's a new presented commissioner.
That's it.
Take the credit for that one, Sam. We'll make you be the bad guy.
I don't know, John, I have to stop telling these jurors. It's kind of a...
I mean, you can't say anything bad about Maryland, so...
Yeah, Mary, let me put it this way, they both know that you and I, you and me, right, that all we've got left is one year, four weeks, one day, 10 hours, and six minutes.
Well, you're doing, you're keeping it better than I am.
That's 98 cents paper spend.
Hey, yeah. I'll be sad to go, but...
Oh, I forgot one more thing.
Probably.
There's the other one, you ready? Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas, Steve.
Yes, Merry Christmas. Get that timer ready.
Why are you turning this sucker on? Because I know that five hours...
You'll be getting your invitations to the Christmas get-together pretty quick, it'll be probably tomorrow.
I'll make sure you use posted out of your phone button.
We're using email.
Perfect.
What's he doing?
He didn't like putting that 91 in there.
Well, we knew that this other, these raises and stuff was coming through after public works last year, a lot of voters know against that. If I could say what a vote no against all this other stuff, you got to eliminate some positions, but unfortunately...
We have a pre-release program.
Huh?
We've got a pre-release program.
I know, and it was what they recommended. I still have issues with that. That's odd with, I mean, we had a happy medium on how many for the running that jail because it's supposed to be that much more streamlined, so whenever we had the first discussion, when we first opened it, that took us by the longest, figuring out how many people was going to go.
All right, Mary, what do you think? Well, revenues are revenue, your fees, so do you have any questions about what question you have put in for expenses or revenues? Well, our revenues are really good. We are waiting for the court to get us, once the court gets us our, our orders back to us, we'll have to pay $93,385,16. I'm holding three or two that's about $1,000 because one of them has to have some terrific dental equipment, and, and, you know, there's no Medicaid dental, so we're kind of holding on those two, so there may be a other one.
But 10 of that was a more time...
Yeah.
Yeah.
But hopefully we have that, like, every year, we, we get those dates, dates, dates. And we...
But you're filling the savings probably good at the bridge for me.
I think it is 85, yeah. And I think expenses are fine. I ran short, I'm finally getting through a couple years of training staff, and so I'm getting back on the road and being able to visit the clients, and there's so many new clients out there on the road. So I ran short on my mileage, and I, I know Kristen, I'm sorry, I've got a great, great daughter, Kristen, but Kristen and Debbie, I asked, I notified them, and they were thinking of having to transfer 450 into my mileage this year to get me through December, end of paper, October and November. to get me through December, end of paper, October and November. And I don't know where that is.
Maybe five hundred bucks, sir.
I already set the transfer around, I'm sure.
So that'll be, taking the mileage for twenty-fifty, like, thirty-five hundred, and I really believe that it needs to be raised to four thousand for next year. For thirty-five hundred, I mean, we can always handle it, I guess, at the end of the year. Other than that...
How much do you need on that then, Maryland, thirty-five hundred or four thousand?
I think for next year, we ought to do four thousand.
What if we had?
And of course, if I don't use it, then it stays in there.
Could we have like the, I don't know, we used to have some sheets or something that went back even to like two thousand twelve? Okay.
I see last year, huh? You got to get out of the budget and go to that actual line item?
Well...
Last year, I just hadn't, didn't even use like...
Getting more magnitude.
Nine's up right now, but you can hit the table and stop.
Can't make a table? Make a table, make a road, a terretta bill?
I don't have, yeah, I could do a report, probably.
So in two thousand and twelve, her, her original budget was forty-two hundred, but she had one thousand six fifty-nine maybe at the end of the year, but she did not spend. So she only spent two thousand six fifty-nine.
So apparently it used to be higher.
It used to be higher, yeah.
We used less, so we reduced it.
So we reduced it.
And this year was one of those years that we used thirty-three hundred.
So far.
Projected.
We're projecting past thirty, past, um, I don't have to give those right now.
Twenty-twelve was the year my husband died and...
So, I mean, if this was just an exceptionally high year...
I think this, this needs to be, this is, this is how much I need to be on the road.
Well, I'm not arguing in that, Mary, but mileage is mileage.
I know.
That's what I'm trying to see, what the history has of, we need to go to thirty-five hundred or four thousand. Cause that one year, we had forty-two hundred in there, there was nineteen hundred left over.
That's the year my husband died.
So there was, there was less in there, but, well, somebody's still gotta be taking care of this stuff though, right?
Well, I just was, wasn't, I was handling everything more by phone and email and not actually getting...
You were back to work within two days.
I was, and I was just not doing the traveling and then the, the clients get pretty upset when they don't get to see me, but they understood and, I mean, I... I was still doing all the work, I just wasn't getting to get out there and see them as much. And then I had to, to, uh, snap, I trained one, one year, and then now training another one, so, and that takes a lot of... Just struggling, I think we're pretty well set now.
Why would we decide on that one?
Anywhere from thirty-five, four thousand.
Can't talk bounce around everywhere, I don't, never know where y'all gonna go with stuff. Time to get shiny objects up here. Jeez, we already did your budget. So where are we at on that, at thirty-five?
I think that'd be good.
Thirty-five?
So... Kristen and, and Maryland's budget here, her salary line, projected activity was one thirty-nine, six forty-nine.
She had a person that left.
Okay.
During the year, so she had some times where there actually was not all the positions filled.
Okay.
So if she had had all of her positions filled all year long, like what they were budgeted, it would've been the one forty-five, two ninety-five.
Okay.
And that happened two years in a row, so like, now I pull the, the first table.
Okay.
I feel really bad, I've been in my new offices that you all fixed up for me a year and a half and haven't ever invited you over to sit.
You haven't even had a party or?
But, so we have, we're, we're really, we really like it and we're really stacked in there. But, um, we're, I've been talking about going to surplus to get maybe some kind of a credenza or something for Connie, cause she does...
We can give you a credenza for tons of treasures. I got a credenza for her.
It'd have to be a little...
He's wanting a new one, too.
Well, I know, but we're gonna take that one.
Wanna give it to her.
She's asking for one. This is a, this is an empty.
That makes point, um, we, in, in our, in our file room, or in our, um, storage room, we, when we moved in there, we, we got three new shelves from Samco and I think the best thing would be to put two more shelves in there and we have a nice, long, pulled-up table that Connie can use cause we're starting into taxes and we do the income taxes for two hundred and thirty clients on our TurboTax and we have just files and stuff stacked everywhere. So we checked with Samco and to get two new shelves, it would be, and of course, you know, this is just their prices and I know if it goes to you guys, it's probably different. But they're a hundred and seventy-two apiece, that's just something to throw out there.
You understand?
We really do, we are so out of space. We, we are constantly, my girls are constantly boxing up, up stuff and having to send it out, dude, to the storage. I, I have to blance, I have no idea, but we probably have to pull just ourselves, but it's, it works really well.
And Maryland, I don't see fault for a general signature, but is that, what is that?
It doesn't come under mine.
No, it's general health, there.
I have to petition for the general home, but it doesn't come under mine. That's it.
Thank you, I did invite Paula down because we have an extra time, so.
Paula, if you wanna... Thank you.
Thank you, Maryland.
Thanks, Maryland.
Don't forget to come by and see us.
He's seven-four.
You got food?
What was that?
You know how to get us there.
I got the Christmas decorations.
Oh, then I'll be having an arby. I'm off sentimental when it comes to that stuff.
Bye, bye, thank you, guys.
Hey, I decorated my office.
Well, it's pretty.
Can I go see it?
Did you take some stuff?
Did I take some of your stuff?
Yeah, I thought you said you missing stuff.
No, I said you missed your stuff.
No. You know, I'm so glad to hear that.
They're starting to get distracted.
Do you need a app on your phone or?
I have to use that app they have on my, when we do our workouts, it beeps like every so often, cause you okay start something new.
So Tom Court is, um, just that thin and out. Whatever, so she gets back. Uh, we used to gain a little bit of money, but we don't gain any money anymore. You have any problems with the revenues?
Um, Kristen, what number did you use for two thirty-two?
Seven-four?
Did you miss that when you ordered that? I mean, for last year, like, cause I had a turnover and I think it helped some hours or, you know, see my, I get some of the things.
What do you mean? Well, fully established fifteen would've been the two oh five, five, fourteen.
I took everybody's salary.
Well, then plus the four percent is two seventeen, please, I'm gonna... Do I have somebody in their own?
I was thinking, this, this was long, so, because, um, Amanda and Chris didn't, didn't start.
You're doing a good job, you're projecting all that.
So there could be some change between...
Yeah, because, um, Amanda didn't start, they both started in the first quarter sometime, I believe, so...
It should've been, right?
That's, that's the one part I want you guys to look at, I, I wasn't sure.
Do you have any other expense line items you wanna have a question about or?
Are you sure you cut the service equipment contract, you sure that's enough to take on the company?
Have you paid for all of it already this year?
Copy here a week and then, sorry, she's skipping all over, it's like, copy here a week.
Try to keep up with the work.
Twenty-three hundred for the week and then I had three hundred dollars in overage. I should've took what you were paying monthly.
What'd you say, a hundred and seventy?
Yeah, I think it's a hundred and seventy.
Two thousand forty dollars.
Okay, new check on, making sure we go right number three for salaries.
Yeah, we'll double check to make sure.
I'm hoping I do not have these numbers this year, I had turnover two years ago, lose people to state cause they, they get more money by losing.
Sorry.
Do you guys have any questions?
No.
No.
Easy enough?
Thank you, Holly.
There, now you're back on track.
Now I'm back on track. All right, Chris, you're right.
You got food, everybody?
Chris, how are you?
One oh two.
One oh two.
One oh two.
So the number, you had two different numbers and you were gone after you submitted the budget, but if you double-click, set the on professional services? You had the seventy-five in here, but the number you had on the house side was the, they were not staying, they did not match.
How about add whatever we needed, seventy-five thousand?
I think I did the same thing, I stood it back, back here, thinking it carried.
Yeah, if you don't have the option turned on to carry forward the total of the note, it will take whatever you put in due to the department requested on. It does not matter what you put in the note unless you have that option turned on. I can't, well, you could... We can't go back and change your department request at this point.
But we're obsessed right now.
And if you click on there, that includes the hundred and twenty-two for the Amber case, that's still left.
We got started.
And then thirty thousand for jail attorneys and...
So we can't change what I replied, seventy-five thousand?
Cause we've already printed and made public the department request. I understand it's in, it's in the note, but that was not what went on in that column as far as the market went.
Computer error on the system.
It's not that you can't ask that that be put back in.
I would ask that that be changed to seventy-five thousand for professional services, that's usually what we go with almost every year. And, uh, we'll come near to cutting it.
Do you have any other, the revenue side is...
What did we change? I thought y'all were in a private conversation.
Professional services, I entered professional services into the notes section and evidently didn't carry that amount over to the notes section. Show, it shows ten thousand on the main portion, but in the notes section, it's the seventy-five thousand I requested.
So he wanted his request to be seventy-five thousand or not that thousand?
Well, you gave him one fifty-two.
Yeah, right.
That's including the set aside for the, uh, Amberan appeal.
So I actually only gave it thirty thousand.
And we don't know what we're looking at for the Amberan appeal right now, they have appealed on up and we believe this led me to the circuit court. And each county will be going on their own from that point out because you can't hear all the cases in one circuit because they all affect different circuits. So the different counties are in different circuits.
I guess we need to have somebody come in and help us about that, cause we're, we're into, school districts paying a portion of this already, aren't we?
Yeah, I have not, though, before, in fact.
But we, we already, we already paid, but we agreed we would, uh...
We're almost there, I guess, unless you have all...
So we spent a hundred and twenty-five or?
Eighteen.
Hundred and eight thousand.
But we've spent a hundred.
So what are we changing that line to?
Well, one, the Amberan case portion is gonna be calculated as to what we have left and he's saying there could be additional cost on top of what we have budgeted in there. And then he went seventy-five on top of whatever that number is.
Which is the number that I usually carry in that spot, cause it appears passed and that covers, you know, any contractual work that we will do.
Was the agreement with the school districts, was it, we paid first one eighteen and they were on the hook for the rest?
Yes, but we were gonna pay it and build the...
Right, right, okay. Wanted to refresh my memory.
Yeah, I didn't remember either. Saying something or sharing it and then at some point it went to them or we took over, so it's good to know.
I think that was before your time, too.
Yeah, I don't know, yeah, we probably had an update on that, just to see if, if it could go well beyond, or two thirty-six, or whatever the estimate was. At some point, we may have to say, you know...
Hopefully I'll be in the unit, John, or...
Maybe the school district might say, you know, you did it, or whatever, I don't know.
I doubt that'll happen, cause you're talking about nearly half a million dollars in tax money and that's every year going forward.
Right, I mean, at some point, you gotta, yeah, I mean, maybe not at two thirty-six, but at some point, you know, we get into half a million dollars or something. And I think we would, I mean, we're not losing a half million, but they tend to lose a lot.
Yeah, they do. Uh, basically, as far as everything else, we're in the same position we were a year ago. Might still need three employees, I've hired one to replace the one that left a couple of months ago, she will start the first part of January. She's a certified residential appraiser, uh, I think her start date is January fourth. But we might still need the other three people in the appraisal department because we're, we're at our limit now. I've got people who are working weekends and working evenings and it's either gonna have to be an overtime thing or it's gonna have to be a, where we hire additional people. We did the contracting for some, uh, general cases, appraisals, and for the most part, we got good ones, but there were six of them that the quality of the appraisals was very poor. And I'm not gonna say which ones those were, but the problem, hiring somebody outside of our office to do that is that we have no control over the quality of that appraisal and you're contracting with somebody, you give the quality of what they got. And when that's happening, you contract at such a late period, not knowing who's gonna appeal or who isn't, then we have a problem with trying to get everything done in that time period.
So do we have to have those reappraised or?
We could try to, to have it redone, and it's possible that I could, um, contract with a different company. I don't know that it would be worth the extra money for the difference, it's only about a, a two million dollar difference on one of the properties. So we're talking probably close to four thousand dollars to redo that appraisal and I don't know that it's gonna be worth it to spend the money. That's why it's best to have a general certified on staff, because then they can work whatever needs to be worked to cover those. And we have quality control over those appraisals. Do you have any other questions?
Um, when you say you need three people, Chris, I mean, is that, are you needing commercial appraiser and two residential? Or elaborate on that a little bit?
Right now, I've got a commercial supervisor. I've got a residential supervisor. Both of those people have in excess of twenty years' experience. The residential supervisor could retire just about any time. And I don't know if you can tell me for sure that he felt sad on that, but I mean, I think that he could probably retire tomorrow if he felt like it. And then I would be stuck with one person who's got in excess of twenty years' experience and two people with three years' experience and four years' experience. And that's just not enough time to run one of the offices over there. You know, they don't have enough experience to do that on their own at this point. It usually takes three to five years to bring somebody up and that's somebody that doesn't have any background in it. If you've got background in it, you might be able to do it in three years. A mass appraisal is a bit of a different animal than fee appraisal is. And those are some of the things that you have to take into consideration. So, ideally, we would have two additional residential people hired. And the other person, I, I have thought that I would like to get three people in the commercial department, but what might happen is one of the people that I already have might move to commercial after sufficient training, along with the general certified and the supervisor I have there now. Uh, the paperwork I handed out last year, I have a copy of that. If you're interested, it's still dated, twenty fifteen, but it shows a personal property manager and three assessment clerks, which we currently have. We have two clerks that are in training. Uh, we currently have, in the residential appraisal department, we have a manager and we currently have two employees there. In the commercial appraisal department, we have the commercial manager and nobody else. And then we have our mapping department. So, what this shows is a total of five people in residential and three in commercial is what we would really like to see happen. Right now, we have one commercial and as of January first, we will have four total in residential.
What happened with the quality of the appraisals you got before? I mean, what?
Specifically, what happened was is they went and used comps that were outside the state.
So, that was on commercial stuff?
It was on commercial property. And there were, there were good quality comps that were in the state.
Did we pay them?
Didn't have choice.
Well, they didn't do it so.
They provided the service. They provided the service, you know, just because somebody pulls a poor comp isn't justified or reasonable for reason not to pay them.
I, I would think so. I wouldn't have paid them. I would say there's, this is not a good comp and make them redo it and then pay them.
Part of the problem was that we were coming up to appeal time and it wasn't time to get another appraisal. Second off, it's up to the appraiser's discretion what comps they use. Now, I'm sure, just like you full know that there are some people out there that are good at doing comps and there's some people that aren't quite so good at doing comps. You've probably encountered that in your work.
Well, why would you use comps out of state? I mean, why wouldn't you use comps?
My, my personal opinion is they got lazy.
Just lazy.
And they, they did a, a search on the internet and those are the ones they came up with.
Let's go check zillow.com after.
I mean, that's just.
I, I agree with you saying like, I do, I absolutely agree with you.
I'm not picking on you on this part. I'm not picking on them because I don't think we should pay them. And.
You're gonna keep that on that.
Oh, well, you're gonna, Chris, don't have that on your mind.
And that's, that's the problem with, you know, when you hire for a service and they provide the service and they provided the service based on what the appraisal guy has, then they perform the servicing, you gotta pay them. I'm sure if we hadn't have paid them, we'd have been, ended up in court with them and
So, it's a local company? Is it a local company or?
No, it's, it's, see, there are only, I think there are only two commercial appraisers or general certified appraisers in Cole County anymore. Mr. George retired, Dave Nunn's retired. So, it's really tough finding somebody. Now, we had a couple done that were done with the. Jim's retired, yeah, and Dave is, Dave Nunn is retired too. Or semi-retired, I guess I should say, because they did some of those. But we've got Bob Doris, who is with Nunn Company. I think he's in charge there now. And I think there's one other, but I'm not a hundred percent on that. And those, those are some of the problems that we dealt with last year, having to contract out appraisals. We got several that were very good appraisers and were, were accurate and were very close to the value that we had on them. But there were several that were not very good, in my personal opinion. Now, I'm sure that the appraiser who did them could argue that they were excellent appraisers, but I, I'm definitely not that opinion.
How long do you gotta work under an appraiser to get your certification? Is it two years?
No, or it's?
Two or three years. I would, it's not something you just go take your classes and.
Let me, uh, let me get you happy with this. This has got attached to it, the.
I guess where I was going with there was if we get these, we've got these people, we're training them to be certified appraisers, do we have like a no compete clause in there so that they can't, just once they become certified, they can't just leave them?
Here is, this is what, uh, this came from the Appraisers Commission website. And there's what's required for residential and.
They have so many hours of education, but then they gotta work some.
Not only that, you gotta have a four-year degree. You also have to have a four-year degree in college now. Just to. Any degree, here's the, yeah, I know, it makes no sense. Let me get a degree in, in, I don't know.
PE.
Yeah, PE. And now I can go appraise, I can get in there and become a property appraiser. It makes no sense at all and it's something that I've tried to argue with legislature so far unsuccessfully and with the assessors association that they are, what they're trying to do is they're trying to raise the requirements so they can raise the cost and the money that an appraiser gets paid, which I do agree with that. What they're gonna do is they're gonna limit the market to a very few people because it takes almost six years, including your college, actually probably closer to seven years with your college to become a certified residential appraiser. Now, if somebody's gonna go through that much training, why wouldn't they become a doctor or an attorney, a D.O., you know, and make two hundred and fifty to three hundred thousand a year as opposed to making seventy-five thousand a year as an appraiser? It, it makes no sense. It really doesn't.
Sounds like you're the pricing.
Yeah, it's ridiculous. Well, and I can tell you, uh, St. Louis County was, uh, looking for commercial people and their commercial position starts out at fifty-eight thousand. We don't pay that much and I wouldn't hire one at that number. But that's, I mean, that's just the way things are going. And it's not a good situation at all. We really lost out when Judy retired. That was because we had something that was much more valuable than what we were paying for it. And, and quite in fact, she wouldn't take an appraise. She told me several times when I tried to give her an appraise, she said that she wouldn't take it. She wanted the other people to get it. But it's getting to the point that it's, it's very difficult to find qualified people. It really is.
So, Chris, I actually have in the budget that there's twelve positions in your budget currently. It says fourteen, so that would only be two additional points instead of three.
Except that the remain, remaining funds give me, uh, account after hiring a residential appraiser. It's seventy thousand dollars. Seventy thousand, they won't hire. They won't even hire a assessment clerk. I, I believe there's forty-seven thousand in the account right now. And that's including the reserve and the certified residential that will be coming on board at the beginning of January, will be coming in thirty-five thousand, which is what we've hired certified, uh, appraisers in residential before. In fact, we hired him about two years ago, so actually it should be a little higher.
So, the one you have from one one sixteen, you're saying you hired it at thirty-five instead of twenty-eight?
Yes, yes, twenty-eight is for somebody who doesn't have any training. The person I'm hiring is a certified residential appraiser with higher experience. And hired it at thirty-five thousand.
So, that's three thousand hours here and less than thirty-five.
For the work experience, I?
Yeah.
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 So, you can't just.
And that's, that's not a, when you come in and work an eight-hour day, that's not just an eight-hour day. That's if you work thirty minutes on an appraisal and you take another hour to spend it on something else and you come back and do another thirty minutes, that only counts for an hour of appraisal work.
Yeah, that adds to my contact being about getting their assessing, their appraisal certification and we were talking about that too. Three hundred hours, I mean, the bachelor.
Three thousand hours.
Not that big a deal.
Content people are documenting it down to the thirty minutes.
Well, you, you have to, actually, you have to keep a log of that. Yeah, the appraisal commission requires that. And I've got two people right now who have the training to the level where they can start keeping a log. You have to have several of those classes before you can even start your log. But I have two employees who are working on their logs to get their hours. Now, they will initially be going for their residential. Both of them have a four-year degree, so I can, within, you know, when they get that much training, they can become general certified if they choose to do that. So, there are two people in the office now who could become, or could come up to that level, but it's gonna take several years to do that. And I've been trying to hire in people who have that level of experience or who at least have the bachelor's degree for that specific reason.
So, do you have salaries for the three open positions that you're hiring?
I had put something to the budget, I don't remember specifically, I said, put right now what number I had put for all that. But if, usually if we have somebody here who doesn't have the experience, doesn't have background.
You can't find a girl at twenty-eight thousand or a little over twenty-four thousand, I think it was. Give her three thousand hours. Basically, you're saying with three thousand hours, you're like, no, but I'm five thousand. That's what I mean.
Commercial, we had said we would go anywhere from, well, I had said I would go anywhere from forty to fifty, but not over fifty and hopefully forty-five or less. But if things, if you can't find one, I can't put them to work for that amount. And I think after the session, we covered that. And quite honestly, according to the pounds, that's been in my mind.
Are people at?
I don't know.
Can pull up comps like now, even the less, eight thousand, eight, six months?
Yeah, right. I don't know.
And we gotta find it somewhere.
To the point now that. Yes. That horse, I lost a month ago.
I'd say with residential, it isn't a spec deal to me, commercial. Because there's so many different ways of choosing.
So, the open on the first of January, you're thinking thirty-five?
Especially once they're, uh, they're lasting, what's that?
The person, the, the two commercials, I would work both of those and at least a residential certification.
That's all they're set up for.
Just because it takes that much experience to do a commercial.
Well, no, that's a historic site. That was where some of Walter Furtis water that went to the first American Center.
Three years in those commercial divisions. We're really desperate in the residential department right now. If I got one person additional commercial, that would help. And two more in the residential to where they could at least be starting to train. The problem I'm having, I've got one person, like I said, he can retire. And when he retires, all that knowledge is gone. And I've got three guys left right now in appraisal. One's got three years, one's got four years. And that's just not enough to be able to do it on your own and to know everything that has to be done, neither one of them are supporting or they could run that residential department.
Do you have any other budget line items that you wanna talk to the commission about or?
I don't think so. I don't think anything else changed. Uh, and as always with the, uh, in the salary line, I have, I always put in there, merit raises between zero and five percent. And they would be true merit. The five percent, you better walk on water to get that. Zero percent is somebody who just comes to work and does their job, day in and day out, and doesn't do anything else, they're gonna get a zero percent raise. That's the way it works in my book. But that's, you know, something that hasn't been implemented yet because it hasn't been funded.
So, we'll have to, uh, so we've asked everybody to give evaluations and then come up with a plan for, you know, and need those by the fifteenth of December, so.
Yep.
Evaluations. And have a better plan on, plan on how, how you distribute the merit money, um, so.
Something like will be missing in the next two weeks.
Debbie can send you a sample evaluation form if you need to.
Are they same as these? Are they same as the old ones? I've got one thing. Okay, I'll just put it down on paper. If you have any questions, bring them down and then let me know.
All right, well, I appreciate it.
Trying to keep the wheels on and turning.
Next is recorder, Department one twenty-five, page forty-four.
Carol. Hello, I brought a little visual aid with me.
Oh, no.
Uh-uh. This is the nineteen ninety model of the executive office chair, right here.
Debbie, would that work for you?
You wanna see the nineteen seventy model?
All right, um, what's with chairs? It was windows, now it's chairs. Yeah, if you get rid of that one, I want that one.
Doesn't have anything to go up and down.
Oh, yeah, yeah. How much for this, Ralph?
Well, it's a collectible, so.
You ready for some? Who else wants one in an office chair?
I had three of them.
Of course, mine, that's right, of course, mine wanted one.
Three, Matt or Debbie and Chelsea and.
What was that department?
I, I saw it on the.
Predeth was the.
Order one.
So, forty-three and one twenty-five.
I saw it, I saw it on the inventory. So, I searched and searched the office.
Make Dad look this up ourselves.
By the identification number, that's it.
Equipment.
But let's start at the top of the page. In, in the budget that I gave to, uh, Kristen, uh, under the, uh, top of the page that I handed out. And now I'm referring to the budget under meetings, travel and dues. I had, I had put in, taken it from fifteen hundred last year to twenty-one forty-five this year. I did not have as good information as what I'm gonna share today. I do not have as good information to share with Kristen at the time. But, uh, but I do have it today. And so, I wanted to show you how I came up with the twenty-one forty-five. Uh, fourteen hundred for the RAM conference. That's when it'll be at the Excelsior Springs next weekend. Four hundred for the MAC conference, I believe that will be like yours up next year.
Oh, you can't go to that.
I, I was, I'm happy to attend again if the, we wanna take full advantage of the votes and if there are sessions that I took interest in.
Good.
And then also, uh, we've been having, I don't know if they always do it, but since I've been here for a little bit, we've had district meetings. I'm estimating that we'll have at least two of them. And that's some kind of fifty's to mileage for, for district meetings. And then also, uh, this summer, for the first time, we, uh, joined. And then also, uh, this summer, for the first time, we, uh, joined, the recorder's office joins, joined the Property Records Industry Association of one ninety-five, for a total of twenty-one forty-five. So that, that's the, uh, so I will ask that that figure be considered, uh, to the purpose. Moving on down, I'm back with the part-time position. I've, uh, done the numbers and at fourteen thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars for a part-time position, uh, that's a thousand hours, it's always worth fourteen dollars and thirty-two cents an hour. And that is based on what, let's see, the person we, the new person we brought in to the office in April is making fourteen thirty-two plus benefits. And the, what I call a temp that we brought in about a month ago uh, to work on special projects, preservation projects in the back, she's making the fourteen thirty-two without benefits. And this part-time position, that's how I came up with the figure fourteen thirty-two. So a part-time position, one thousand hours, fourteen thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars, uh, and-
That's kind of crazy question, but where did you come up with fourteen dollars and thirty-two cents?
You know, I, I, that is a good question, and I sure have a good answer, I'm not gonna remember what I put.
Okay. Well, if you come up with it, I'd just be curious, it's kinda just, I'm like fourteen, fifteen, fourteen and a quarter.
I do, I remember. The person that we brought in last spring, I, I broke her salary down to hours. And, and her salary came to fourteen thirty-two, and that's where I came up with it.
So you had a lump sum and you broke it out by the hours?
Yeah.
I'd be more comfortable with fourteen dollar point five cents. And then be here in the-
We like round numbers.
Fourteen twenty-five.
The, uh, getting that part-time position, uh, I believe there's, there's- Historically, the offices had fifth and fourth in there for quite a few years until last spring, when that person was let go. And I understand that the, the intention was to bring, uh, a person back to the office again. The, uh, having that fifth person in a part-time base, I only want part-time, I do not want full-time. I don't anticipate coming back, I never asked them for part-time. Excuse me, I don't expect to come back and ask for full-time. I think that this part-time position will serve our purposes very, very well and give us lots of flexibility. Uh, I've, I've made some notes there on, uh, what that person would be doing in the office. And I would ask you to give that very serious consideration, I would really appreciate that part-time position. Under capital purchases, office equipment and furniture, there's a, uh, six hundred and thirty-seven for the eight, uh, Hewlett Packard color laser printer. Uh, Rich, our IT guy, put that on his list. Then the fifty-five hundred for the Ricoh, I put that on the list. The, uh, uh, let's see, the, the, the color, that's a two thousand and six, I believe. And the Ricoh, the one we have right now, it's a two thousand and eight or two thou- two thousand and eight or two thousand and nine. We've been having trouble off and on with the Ricoh. This fifty-five hundred, I would probably recommend that we all purchase it at this time, but they will stick with that number. That was the time I got that number last summer, sometime, or August. Uh, that was two or three thousand dollars less than what it was for a retail form. They had, it was a new, something new about it, and had a lot of them that was promotional price. So I've used that price ever since, I hope they will still want it. Uh, the one printer, the color laser, we use, that's the machine that we, uh, use with marriage licenses. And then the Ricoh, that fifty-five hundred, that's the machine that's out front that we all use. It's the heavy duty we all, we all use, uh, uh, in the front office. The people doing searches do not use that printer. Uh, the employees use that.
Can we just replace that not too long ago?
We had, in, in the recorder's office last spring, we bought a, a wide-format cutting machine with scanning technology.
I was just trying to remember, I thought Roddeman had bought one, uh, for your time. They tried to pay for it, uh, something else or something.
I remember that, I think it's been a couple of years.
Okay.
Uh, and then the, the thousand dollars for office chairs to replace, uh, this one. And also, I, I mentioned the cork board and the drive, you're very supportive. The ones I want to use on the walls are four foot by eight foot. So they're not twenty-dollar items, they're a couple hundred dollars of these. And I put those in here on this line, as since it's a large lump sum of a thousand dollars, I'd rather not take that out of the, uh, I would rather not take that out of the three thousand dollar office supplies that the auditor has recommended, excuse me, the auditor recommended twenty-five hundred, I'd ask for three thousand. I'd rather not take this, a large thousand-dollar purchase out of the three thousand, 'cause I don't know, you know, immediately I'm starting thirty percent down. So I, I would ask for that thousand dollars in increased funding, uh, to be spent for this purpose. Next to that, uh, moving down the list, capital purchases, information systems, recording. That list was developed by Rich, our IT guy. And he went through the, and he knows, he knows our equipment better than any of us. And, and everything on that list that you look at there under information systems was put there by Rich and we simply passed it on. It totals thirteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. And also, uh, the li- the last item, their projection for documents on website in two thousand and sixteen. This is more of a heads up right here, not looking to ask for any funds at this time. But I do wanna give you a heads up that we continue to study the possibility of, uh, putting, having documents on the internet available to the general public. And to do that, we've already done some homework, and we know that, uh, that we're looking at about eleven ninety-five to set up the public viewing, which will be posted by, uh, Computer Information Concepts, who has our software contracted this time, and our software maintenance. And then the, we, the remote access and, uh, SDC, and then the CI, uh, CIC installation, six hundred. So we're looking at around forty-five, twenty. And so at some point, if, if we have time, we'll back to, let me talk about that again. Now, since, since it came up now, let me share with you, we talked, uh, did I hear anything back there?
I don't see it.
Well, anyway, I've talked to, uh, this is all, uh, I've been talking to other, kind of recorders about their offices in one way or another. And, uh, Chris, you, you mentioned last time when, oh, we needed two or three thousand dollars more for the, for the, uh, software maintenance contract. And you said, well, you know, can you guys bid that stuff? 'Cause that's twelve thousand dollars. I agree, that's a lot of money. Um, and, and so at the recorder's meeting a couple of weeks ago, I asked more people, more recorders. And I, I did comparison that I'll share with you, I was talking to the, uh, Charlotte Pickering down in Jasper County, uh, their county seat is in Carthage, Missouri. Also the site of the Ralph Brody Boyhood Home in Carthage, ten twenty-seven Clinton Street, if you write it down.
Is there a plaque up there?
They don't have it up yet. It is a historic district though. So I asked, and, uh, Camden County and Colt County and Jasper County are the last three counties that are class one counties to offer e-recording. And that suggests a sense of, of modern technology in the office also. Uh, Charlotte was elected to office last fall, like I was. She immediate, and she came into the recorder's office from a title company, from having worked at a title company. So she went in, there was some pretty good, uh, pretty good information in her, in her head already. She put her software system out for bid. She got a bid for, the, the bid they accepted was a one hundred thousand dollars even, and it was from Mobulus. There was a seventy-nine thousand dollars, they did not give it much consideration. Perhaps it was a faulty somewhere. The high bid was a hundred and, I don't know, a hundred and thirty-some thousand maybe. But more, more importantly, the, the bid they did accept was from Mobulus, who is signing up a lot of counties right now for e-recording, and they have their software. And their bid was a hundred thousand dollars for the software system. But I got back to Charlotte, uh, last week or, uh, here recently, last week. And, uh, 'cause I didn't see, I, I also had her send me the specifications for the, how they did their system. And, uh, and I asked Charlotte if the hundred thousand dollars includes any annual maintenance. And she said, no, they will also pay twenty thousand dollars a year for the maintenance on their software system. So there's a little background information for her. So, uh, I'm not asking for any money right now. And hopefully we can sit, I have, be in a position to talk to you about some funds so we, because we can be prepared to go, uh, to, to offer information over the internet to the general public. Uh, and the capital purchases, information systems, again, uh, those are the items that, uh, Rich put on the list for the purpose of the annual budget. And then the capital purchases above that, office equipment, furniture, uh, and then the part-time position, and then the, uh, meetings and travel and dues. Uh, that's pretty much my presentation. Doug, do you have any questions I can-
So the part-time, is it, uh, is included in, in your budget, or have you got six, uh, eleven thousand, four fifty-six in part-time?
The, uh-
So you're needing an additional fourteen thousand, or?
No, that eleven thousand and four fifty-six is the person he's currently paying for out of his recorder's credit line. We did not include the part-time position in the general plan.
Okay.
And our mistake, uh, those capital purchases that he requested were accidentally left off the sales tax list. I brought a list down to Debbie later on. That was our mistake, we accidentally overlooked Ralph's request, so those should be added to the request out of sales tax.
So the, uh, are you still willing to pay for some of that part-time, or?
Actually, the person that I'm paying part-time for now, that person is restricted, I'm not restricted. The funds are somewhat restricted for preservation purposes, uh, and, uh, information technologies. Uh, and that's what that person's working on. That person is working on a, a data entry, their, uh, real estate records, uh, starting from nineteen ninety-six and working backwards. So far, she's gotten about to over a thousand entries thus far. And those will all be indexed, so right now our records go from the present back to nineteen ninety-six. What this person is doing is, is we will be able to make records dating back earlier as well. And, uh, hopefully we can get back to, uh, our goal is to get back to nineteen sixty-nine, 'cause those, those are the one, that's what we have average records for. So, uh, you know, the staff has asked to use her for other things out front, but I've reminded them that that person is, you know, I wanna keep it as clean as possible and keep that person, you know, in the role that she was hired for and what the funds were intended for. On the other hand, Chris, the position, the part-time position that we're, that I'm asking for, uh, that person would, would work in the front, that person would, would work, would learn all the stations. Uh, one person does not record a document, takes about, there are several steps to record a document, and the part-time person would learn those different steps also. Uh, so the person would learn, uh, the ins and outs of everything that goes on in the recorder's office, like all the deputy recorders, you know, have knowledge of at this time. And also, uh, when we're down, when, when someone's gone on vacation, uh, we can feel the pressure, when one person is, when we have four, we can feel the pressure when one person is gone. Not every single day, but, but on an average day or a busy day we can. And if someone is sick on that time, we get down to two. Having the flexibility to, to be able to get the, uh, all the work done from the day in which it's presented to us is important. Uh, on, on, I don't, I, I, there's occasions when not everything can be recorded, you know, that day. It shows up that, you know, the day that it's recorded, but sometimes it has, that work has to be finished the next morning. And so I, I, and, and being at the, in the office in the time period I had, uh, a few months ago, you know, I, I recognized that, that, and I said, I've got a perfect full-time person. The, the park is part-time, gives me all the flexibility I think we need. And, and we can move, and that person can also, uh, and that person would also help with preservation projects. Uh, for example, the scanning, uh, plaques and surveys. Now that we can scan on our, on our plaque survey machine, uh, we're scanning plaques as we get them, and, and we're going back now. Once the work gets done, we have a, a staff person that will take plaques and surveys and take them back and scan them into the system. Uh, and so we and others will be able to pull them up, uh, with our computers and not have to go back to the vault to pull them out. So that part-time person will be multi, multi, multifunctional and will give us, uh, give us the comfort zone that I think is important, you know, over the long term.
Can you, this be, or just out of the recorder's fund? And I don't understand how you did some of this, but you got book and record preservation of a hundred and three thousand to zero it out, but-
What, I'm sorry, Chris, I have, uh-
Recorder's fund, fund two twenty. I mean, it looks like there's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in revenues.
Right, so the only thing in there that he currently has, uh, there is, that miscellaneous operating expenses is part-time person, that's twelve thousand, three fifty-nine. And there is a state fee, I think it's about thirty-five thousand. So all of these book and record preservation money, there's, there's no specified use for?
You just came up with a hundred and three to balance it out?
The, uh, Chris, over the, as, as we work together, uh, and I'll know what your expectations are, and you'll apply on. But we're not having that longevity with each other yet. Uh, my approach to the IT fund and the preservation fund, which together we call the recorder's fund, uh, that they have in this, in the reserve device statutes, they have clear definitions on what they're supposed to be used for. And the, I think the best I can do right now is try to, try to follow those guidelines. And so for example, the, uh, we're, we're working with the Secretary of State's office right now. The Secretary of State is gonna come in and, and take some of our earliest books that date from eighteen twenty-one, and I think they topped out around eighteen forty-seven maybe. But it's, they're called A through Z, and they're some of the first books we have. Secretary of State is gonna borrow them, and they're gonna take digital pictures for them and, and for their records. And then they're gonna give those back to us. And those, those books, because they're, uh, they've been around long enough, that they, they need, or the books are falling apart, some of the pages are coming out and stuff like that. And there's like twenty-six of them, you know, A through Z. Uh, so we are getting prices to preserve those books. Uh, the, the papers that are in the document, and these are like oversized books, oversized documents. So far, it looks like it's gonna cost, well, twenty-five thousand dollars or more to, to preser- to do the preservation work that those books require. And those pa- the paper, the paper that is, is in those books, to be properly preserved, they need to be, uh, placed in a sleeve that's made for that purpose, to preserve the paper and, and not cause the paper to deteriorate, but protects the paper. Uh, so to do those, like, like right there, to, to do those books, twenty-six of them, uh, it's, it's gonna be around twenty-five thousand dollars. And, and of course, that would come out, that absolutely would come out of the recorder's fund.
Do you have those at your office, pardon, in front of those downstairs?
Yes. Uh, but also last April, the, the, the other side, the, the wide-frame coffee, uh, prep machine for the plaques and surveys, that was bought with the IT fund in the recorder's fund, their, by the IT money. Uh, because it was clear to me, because of that scanning capability, which I was really looking forward to, uh, I thought that fell under the definition of, uh, kind of IT and, and the recorder's fund had. So I wanna work with you, the, you know, I don't wanna ask you to spin- So I want to work with you, the, you know, I don't want to ask you to spend money on what I need to use the recorder's fund on, but also, I need you to spend to help me keep the office, you know, at a certain level. By the way, down there, the county recorder, down there in Jessup County, the outgoing, had been there for quite a few years, never touched her recorder's fund. Charlotte had $700,000 in that recorder's fund, she took that with something. Yeah. I think, I think we're going to finish the year, the recorder's fund, we're expecting to finish the year, I think we have around 70 or 75,000 in there now, and we'll, we'll finish, well, we're closing it, we're in the last month, so we'll finish somewhere under 100. And, and also, having 12 months under my belt, I will know how fast that money goes. You know, like 20, you know, $28,000 in one lump sum.
These, these bucks.
Come down, see what it is.
It's interesting.
All right. Mark, you were.
All right. Thank you so much for your time.
You are our last mark, I need to tell you. Well, why didn't I?
You're the last one of the day.
Well, I don't blame you for saving the best for me.
And you don't want anything, right? Just, just money.
Good chair, though, Ralph, I like that.
Mine says I give you a case, a case update each year, so.
So case 82, department 63.
And say, in terms of what I've done, it's, I go back to the year before I started, to kind of show the, the commission, the amount of work that's done in 2006 profile, which is from OSC, Office of State Courts Administrators, and I highlighted that felony 371 filings, nine criminal jury trial days on the second page highlighted. And then you can compare that with the last year's profile, which is the most recent printed by OSC, the 2014, 847 felonies filed, 33 criminal days jury trial. To just show, this, our office is busy, as I think prosecutors' offices across the state are busy, with the demands that are required to try to work to keep the community as safe as possible. And as well, each year, I ask for money to try to keep assistant prosecutors more than the, sometimes what has been a three-year stay, so that, because the experience they gain in those first three years are paid back to the county citizens by their better job the fourth, fifth, sixth year. And it's, I think, a better expenditure of county resources to pay the money to keep assistants once we've had them those three years or so. Prior times, assistant prosecutor stayed, I know when I worked in the office in the 80s, we had two that were more or less career prosecutors who stayed more than 10 years, both of which went on to very excellent remaining careers as one is a judge and one is the capital prosecutor for the Attorney General's office for several years. You know, as prosecutor, I would like also to be able to keep some assistants for a period similar to that by getting raises for them that could compete with the salaries that are paid right down the street at the Attorney General's office. Also, last year, you all approved a position for assistant prosecutor, paid for by the Prosecutor's discretionary funds, which I've done this past year. That's one indicated you consider moving to a paid position by you all. I would ask you to consider doing that. It would help out a lot to do that. Next year's budget is, has a potential big expense on trial expenses for serious cases. At this point, there are three death penalty trials, either set or soon to be set for trial to go next year. The expenses for the community, so that they know what those are, on those cases are cases that are likely to involve mental health testimony. And the last case that we had here that involved psychiatric experts, the defense in the case spent upwards of $90,000. Our office had to spend about, right at $45,000 just for expert expense. So those are expenses that, in cases where the only issue may really be whether or not the death penalty is applied and the psychiatric testimony is going to come in on that, to make that showing, we're going to have to have those experts, and those are going to require expenses to do that. Also, not in my budget request, because I don't know the status yet, the office, our office has applied for a grant for a victim advocate. If, if I get the word that we're likely to get that, it would pay 80% of the salary of the victim advocate. Right now, we do not have a victim advocate to work with the victims of crimes other than domestic violence or sexual assault or child molestation. So that on our, our serious murder cases and robbery cases and assault cases with serious injury, we still rely on the assistants and myself to put on a victim advocate hat when dealing with the victims, which takes time away from us doing our best job of presenting the case in court. If, if that grant is made available, I'll come down and talk to the commission and ask about that. Also, that might involve us needing more space to house that person, but it'd be a very important thing. I put a request in, a certain percentage for merit raises, I believe 3%, once again, I encourage the commission to approve such monies as a way to, that office holders can both attract and retain our best employees to serve the citizens of the county. In the last two years, the prosecutor's office has completed a transition to paperless functioning, which means our documents are filed with the court electronically. That transition experience costs several thousands of dollars in computers and scanners and other equipment, as well as training. None of that was paid for by taxpayer funds, that was paid for by money earned by the prosecutor's office from the collection of bad checks and the linked with taxes. In mentioning bad checks, that's a decreasing amount, that has decreased from approximately $300,000 in the early 2000s to right around $60,000 a year. As well, the revenue collections have not increased. So I'd be happy to answer any questions or talk to you, anything about the budget issue or also if things come up and you need a supplemental meeting or have anything, I'll be very happy to come down on these.
How many issues, press, attorney, steward?
Six, six that do criminal work. The two that do the child support, that's budgeted for separately. And that's the same number of assistants that my predecessor had, and that's why I showed the 2006 numbers. And essentially, what is happening in our county as far as the court and prosecutors is, we're, we have a caseload, it would be like if we were a four-cylinder engine, we had a caseload of six cylinders, eight cylinders, that we're trying to process. And our four judges are, they have a lot of demands on them with the increased criminal caseload, I don't know what their increased civil caseload is. But as long as those numbers stay where they're at, there has to be a strong presence in the courts and the prosecutor's office in an effort to deter crime and see that crime is adequately punished so that citizens stay safe. I think generally, in talking to citizens of the county, they do feel that they're safe here, and, and that's a good thing. And I believe they are safe, although it's heart-wrenching to look at the crimes that are occurring and the, the potential threat of more crimes occurring as, as the drugs seem to never get stopped at the border due to our federal government, not much that Cole County can do about that, but it seems like the supply of drugs is increasing, and that drives 95% of the crimes. And when we had last summer a seizure of six pounds of methamphetamine out on the west side of town, that's simply a large amount of drug that sold in doses of a tenth of a gram. And as that continues, the, the resources that it takes to combat it are resourced at every level. And the communities that put those resources into their law enforcement, prosecution and courts, I think are going to help their citizens see a safer life.
So it's really not a, there's really not a whole lot more cases, it's just a lot more felonies that you're having to take to trial?
Well, it's a lot more felonies filed.
Right.
There's a lot more felonies filed than those are, and they do result in a lot more cases. I mean, that is a lot more cases.
Right, right.
In any case, we try not to file more than three counts, but those are just the felony cases filed, not so much the counts. And it's a, an increase that, that is not unique to Cole County. Other counties have seen more. As I've said before, thankfully, the detection rate on some crimes has increased due to citizens having more surveillance systems. Now, a lot of commercial places have that. Fortunately, law enforcement is catching more criminals, a higher percentage than before, which results in a requirement for more prosecution of those. And which is good for citizens. The one deterrent that works the best for criminals is the, the knowledge or strong belief that they're going to get caught if they do the crime. And the other hand on that is they need to know that they will face a very well-operated prosecutor's office and a court system that can take that case and meet out the proper punishment.
So the increase that you requested in your salaries, was that basically just to compensate your prosecutor more?
For the most part of it, it is. The, the staff is generally stable in the sense of, the comparisons to what the staff equivalents make in this town or this general area are close. Certainly not, I certainly do not believe there, any of them are overpaid, but as far as who is underpaid, it's the assistants, especially when they get to that three-year prosecutor experience plateau, which I have experienced from those that have left the office for increases in salary. One left several years ago for a $20-something thousand dollar increase, and another one left more recently for an $8,000 increase at another prosecutor's office, both of those. And so, and those are comparisons that are easy to make because of the state manual and the state payroll information and the, and also my knowledge of a lot of attorneys now, how many years' experience they've had, where they're working, I can get on the websites and look up what the equivalents are making. And when I came to Cole County, Cole County was very good at paying assistants in this, in that, I came from the Attorney General's office over here for a $5,000 a year raise. Now, the reverse is true. I, I have assistants that, based on their experience, could leave. The one thing that's helping me keep them now is their, their desire to get trial experience, which then makes them be able to demand a higher salary. And prosecutor's offices, as I always say, are not going to be able to keep every assistant as a prior prosecutor. But it sure be nice to have the chance to keep a couple, given the demands that, and I think what the community expects when they call, and the question I get from victims of serious crime is, are you going to put your most experienced prosecutor on the case? And it's nice to have some now that have, that I can say they have good experience. And I'm confident for victims, and I share that with victims, they will do a good job in court. So I want to try to keep those salaries competitive, at least for a couple of those positions, so that they stay here and have some continuity for the citizens.
Well, a couple of other things, Mark. You had criminal prosecution at $83,000, and the budget officer took you down to $25,000.
Yes, Chris did not talk to me about that. That's, that's largely due to the death penalty cases that are scheduled, that really have as the most likely defense component, the, the hiring of psychiatric experts, that when they go and do that, then our office, to be able to have a chance to get the punishment that we believe should be required in the case, has to go out and retain experts to counter theirs. And as I said in the last case, we managed to do that at half the cost of theirs, but it still was expensive.
Is that something that's highly likely that will happen? Or, I mean, a lot of times those cases say they're going to trial and they don't happen, and so, you know, I mean, is it something we can put in the budget if, if needed, or?
That's kind of where I was at, because we kind of do the same thing with the jury script, you know, depending on whether or not the case actually goes or not, then we can move money into there if needed. I don't know if that's a possibility or not.
For some of that, maybe so, but some of it is, the answer would be no, because as the case is developing, we have to hire our experts, get their reports, have the depositions, and the large amount of the time that we're paying for occurs well in advance of the trial. So that, so that next year, even if some of those cases get bumped to the next year, the bulk of that work is going to occur in that year. But, but out of three right now that are set or soon to be set, one is still soon to be set, the odds are one or two of those will get moved because the judges get hamstrung by prior federal decisions, that if they don't grant a defense continuance, then it might get thrown out later. So judges sometimes are forced to continue the case just because of the worry that if the prosecutor does get the death penalty, if they force the defense to trial before the defense said they were ready, then it might get thrown out. So out of the three, there's a good chance one or two will get moved into next year. But, but it doesn't mean that the money won't have to be expensed next year for a large part of it.
So do you think you need to pull $83,000 or?
You never, you never.
I mean, is there a happy medium there? I mean, it's $60,000 or something?
You know, and I'm also happy to come down and show, look, this is what the defense, like I say, the last time I handled it conservatively.
Right.
They spent $90,000 on defense experts for psychiatric, the state spent 45, but 45 in one case is a, is, and citizens also like, what in the world? But if you don't, then you're guaranteed not to get the result that a county expects for the level of what our citizens pay, they deserve to have a county that gets the appropriate punishments when it's required. But sure, I can work with the commission to ensure that, that puts, puts some in there, a third of it or whatever, and then as that starts going, it looks like that, where I'm going, I'm happy to come down and share those things with the commission, say, look, this is where I'm at, and to be able to try these cases and go forward, I'm going to need this amount of money. So I don't think that's a big sticking point.
Sure.
And we can work with that next year, but we'd like some money to be put in there to start with, because those cases are ongoing now as we speak.
And the only other thing with the equipment maintenance, I saw that she, you had $14,000, and she took it back to $94,500. I don't know.
I don't know on that. We had two copiers and got two more, those two we traded in or gave back and made a deal for two copiers. Obviously, we got to have copiers because we have to copy every single report we get and hand it over to the defense. We also have to copy reports for the probation officers when the courts order them to prepare their reports. So we do a lot of copying, and that's just, I think, what the expense is, the $14,000. And I don't, I don't understand why it's cut back, but, but also, I'll say this, not one time now, this is, this will be the completion of my ninth year in December 31st of this year, not one time has prosecutor's office gone over budget or come back and asked for additional funds. And I feel proud of that record, too.
Great.
No, I don't have any questions. Please, appreciate you staying in the budget. I'm going to have to transfer results.
Sorry. That's no problem. Thank you all.
Thanks, Mark. Appreciate it.
Okay, you're welcome.
All right, so we did just through all of the on the list.
Oh, goodie. You're hurrying.
Oh, goodie.
Leave, right?
No. Well, it's been a long day.
We don't know on anything right now.
Yeah, okay, we're done. So we will be back here Monday, or next Thursday. And I guess we'll just go through each one of the requests.
Yeah.
I will say.
We didn't have very many changes in there.
No. I just need to answer one way or another.
We didn't have very many people requesting any changes.
Not really.
From what, I mean, Mark's about to.
I'm going to get Mark, probably send him something on those evaluations.
Yeah.
I think you just need to let everybody say their due run fifteen, there's a couple forms you need there.
And you probably ought to say that we need to have, or maybe there's your merit money.
And a plan.
Yeah. I will say.
We didn't have very many changes in there.
I just think they're from one way or another.
We didn't have very many people requesting any changes.
Not really.
From what, I mean, Mark's about to.
I'm going to get Mark, probably send him something on those evaluations.
Oh, yeah.
I think you just need to let everybody say their due run fifteen, there's a couple of forms you need there.
And you probably ought to say that we need to have, or maybe there's your merit.
And a plan.
Yeah. Just because they don't really, there's not some punishment they won't, they won't give them back.
Oh, yeah.
What kind of planner do they actually have? Do we have something that's uniform across the county that we want to do?
Everybody's job is kind of different. I mean, EMS came up with their own scale of how they want to evaluate their people as well.
So you're going to have somebody that's got two people working for them, and three has to have a plan? I don't know, we argue this whenever.
Do you have your plans, though?
Yeah, my plan's pretty easy, that one employee, as long as she gets a good evaluation, she gets a two percent.
When Mark was here, you know, he was never big on COAs and didn't want to get any COAs, and so we did a lot of that.
Well, Mark went, he was far on one side of having a plan, where he's saying there's no bell curve or any back, you know, you've got some that deserve no raise. I disagree with that.
Well, I think the plan thing is more for, some of the larger departments have their own evaluation system, their own point system. We want to know, are you actually basing it on their performance and their points? Or are you saying, no, I'm evaluating whether or not they've done something during the year that's spectacular? You know, what are you using to base your merit on? Because, I mean, some of the smaller departments, they don't have that, but they may say, hey, Arla did an excellent job this year. She deserves more than Dawn, or, you know, just throwing it out there. I mean, just give me some idea that you're.
Where are you basing that criteria on? Because she showed up to work every day, she said she was going to show up.
That's for them to.
Then, then for them to decide.
So then we're going to look at their plan and go, nope, we don't like this plan, I'm not giving them one?
Well, I guess if you're taking all of the total, but then giving it to one person, then at that point, are you going to say, hey, wait a minute, this doesn't really look right? I mean, that's kind of where you're at. Do you want them to be able to give one person a fifteen percent raise than everybody else does? So do you want them to submit some sort of plan to you? Are you okay with just giving the full amount to one person?
I'm not even going to argue it, besides arguing, because of both ways. I mean, I'd like them to not just go flat across the board.
Right.
But you are, you're just flat across the board, of course, you don't get one employee.
Why also only get two percent to give her? She doesn't get the ability to earn any more than two percent. If she was in a department of more than one person, she might be able to earn three or four percent.
Are you still in session?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Chris, on the.
It might not be a bad thing.
I was going to tell you, I don't know if we've received that December fifteen appraisal email. Some of us haven't received it.
Crazy email.
No, for the employee break, which we're talking about now. She's going to send it out.
She's going to send it out.
Yeah.
Yeah, when you get ready to start doing stuff online for accessing the information and e-bond stuff, let me know. I think that'd be awesome. So, we can do that some other time, not this.
You're going to bring us in the twenty-first century down there, aren't you?
Yeah, but it's not going to start by itself. So, get the ball rolling. And I don't care if you just talk to me, I'd be one of your biggest advocates on it.
Well, it's going to cost.
Twist these guys' arms. I'm twisting Sam's arm about this.
I think, I think, I think he's, you know, your predecessor, you've got a lot to do to bring it, bring it current.
And I must say, Larry did a good job with the office for the two years, and had it, the office started really well. But when it got to the IT stuff.
I can understand that.
He just didn't get into that at all. So there's something.
Yeah, just when you get ready to start doing it. I'll say that until I see a price tag, then I'll be going, oh, crap.
Yeah, it's going to take a lot of time, and, but as we get the money, we'll have plenty of things to move in that area.
Oh, yeah.
So, Chris, I'm going to be interested to know what you think of this, you guys do.
Well, I knew it was coming, because last year what we did was public works, and when we did that, we basically opened the doors for everybody to bring something to us.
Well, I'd say you have to tell me right now. Maybe, yeah, I want.
First place, I don't know, it's one percent a year, is what it looks like, their duty is one percent a year. Years of service is years of service with the county, it's not years of service in that position, I don't think. I could be wrong about that, too. I mean, it looks like there could be some tweaking to their plan a little bit.
Are we just not wanting this recorded?
No.
We need to march it to go.
Then we need to quit talking about it.
Okay, well, have a seat. Okay.
I mean, I don't know. First things, those are the first two things that are kind of throwing red flags to me. Is one, it's one percent a year, no matter what, and then two, it's based on years with the county, not years in that position. So I mean, like, if you take a sergeant, twenty-one years of service, was she a sergeant for twenty-one years? Or has she been with the county for twenty-one years? So then are you basing where she falls in there?
Based on the number of years she's been, or?
Right, not the number of years she's been. So I guess, those are the two red flags that are coming up, is how they're calculating it. I don't know. I mean, it might be a good plan, I just don't know that.
And I think if you're going to do this type of plan with one department, we should look at it for the whole county.
Well, we should have done that when we did the works.
Well, I'm not saying that wasn't the right thing to do either. I'm saying, a standard thing across the whole county. I know we're all unique and different in title.
Well, and I guess the other thing is, they take it out to a deputy nominee for twenty-five years. Is that maybe because they have someone that's been in a deputy position for twenty-five years? I mean, should there be a cap at some point before twenty-five years that you've met your?
Your.
I mean, is your compression built in at that point? Is it, I mean?
There's no perfect system.
No, there's not.
I mean, the only way, only way the system works is if you have a, you know, a salary for that range, and then people get COAs for years of service or whatever. And yeah, that could create some compression, probably. Yeah, I mean, it's going to, but that's why you have to have diverse age groups.
Well, there's two, you probably, I mean, there's two types of systems. One is you have a set salary scale that you go by, and it increases based on years of service or whatever. Or you have a merit system. I don't think you can mesh the two together, because then you're rewarding the people on the same scale. I think, I think it's two separate things. You're either giving merit money for doing a good job, and you're dividing that out based on your performance, or you're following a salary schedule. And your salary schedule moves from year to year. I mean, that's what Archer was supposed to do when they did it. It was supposed to move the scale, and you were supposed to move up steps within the range.
And it was set for that. We just couldn't afford to even get on it, to begin with. So we just made as a platform to get on it, and then we kind of forgot all the steps in between based on longevity. So we didn't use it, and we didn't increase it, so no, it's not effective anymore. Do I think we need one countywide? I think it's a, it's a perfect time. It puts you guys out of the loop not to have to pick and choose and make these decisions. I mean, just like the health department, you know, a physician left, we took that money, we divided it out. Here we are, not even two and a half years later, we want that physician filled. But we're not going to reduce any of those other salaries that we gave. So to me, if we had it set, these people are going to start here, and if they come in with education, they're going to start here. And then from then on, they're going to go up the scale depending on however it's structured, you know, by longevity. And then, of course, we have to make the commitment, you guys have to make the commitment, to keep it up with the COLA. Or that market study that they've done won't be any good if we can't keep it up with the COLA.
Will there be a base salary if somebody came in more qualified than the base, and we could bring them in at this level?
I think you want that flexibility within.
And then, I mean, I'm still a big merit person, because I think, you know, if you've got exceptional people, that you need to try and keep them. And if you don't have merit, then you don't keep people, they move on. But if you do COAs and you do merit, you're going to have compression. I mean, there's just no way around it. I mean, you're going to have people making more at one position maybe than other people, but, you know, that's just the way it is. I mean, right or wrong. You know, if people are willing to do the job, and some people are going to be better at it than others, I don't know. I mean, you're going to have people that may be a deputy one making more than somebody that's a deputy three. I don't know, but, you know, I mean, it's just going to happen. I mean, it shouldn't be that way, but if a deputy one doesn't want to get promoted, and he's been here and he's doing a great job at what he's doing, yeah, I'd want to keep him, too, but. I don't know how you, I mean, I don't know how you do it. I mean, the study's great, and I, I mean, I think all that's good, but.
It won't fix everything, but it will at least give guidance. Right now, we're kind of, well, we use Archer's study for some departments, we don't use it for others. We kind of base the budget based on where people are currently, not basically on a position, you know. I know it's probably more accurate to base it on the person that's in that position for budget purposes. But I don't know, I just, I think we need to, and doing it in-house, we can work on it. I don't think it will get the respect and acceptance if it's not done by an outside source.
So how do we, how do we get the others to buy in on that, though? I mean, is there a, is there, is there an education factor that, that's this much dollars?
I think that you, I think you would have to come up, I mean, they've done a good job of trying to get you started. I mean, I think we need to come up with, here's a list of incentives. Here's, here's a checklist that you go through when you're hiring someone for a position. Do they have this? Do they not have this? They get so much if they have this. You know, I think there needs to be that in there somewhere, you know. Does this person require an education? Does this person not? You know, if this person has an education, is willing to work here for the same salary, do they deserve a little more? Yes, probably. You know, if you come in with ten years of experience in the field, yeah, you're better than the person coming out of college that has none.
But in that respect, it still has to be to the position.
In the range, yeah.
To that position. Just because they have the college degree in this position doesn't require it. You know, we can't pay a college level for this position. You might pay a little bit more.
Right. I think, I think you need to have, like, steps that you could take above the starting salary, but below the midpoint of the range, where you can fall in between. A certain percentage over the base salary that you have room to play with for someone that comes in with those kind of things. You know, you can hire three percent over the base salary if they meet these requirements that they don't have to, or, you know, if they're bringing something extra to the, but you'd have to go through and sit down and figure out what, what those percentages are and what those dollar amounts are. Is it a flat dollar amount, or is it?
Multiplier.
Right, you know, you'd have to come up with a plan and use it across the board. I mean, I think you need to get, I think that's how you get people to buy into it, is it's going to have to be something that we use and we stick to it, you know. This is, this is the calculation we're using to come up with salaries. We use it for everyone, no matter what, you know. We can't, we can't do the road bridge thing and decide, well, we're going to reorganize this department, but we're not going to reorganize anything else, you know. You've got to get it to where this is, this is our policy, this is what we're going by, and this is what we use.
Going forward. And each department would have to be obviously marketed to that particular type of work. I mean, it's not, what I mean marketed, I want to know what the going rate is for those positions out in market. That we compete with here in Cole County, you know, not, yeah, well, we like to all be paid like Boone County, or we like to all be paid like the city of Jeff, we've got to find a medium, you know, where we're losing people to in that particular.
But it'd be nice to know what, what that range is for Boone County, City of Jeff, and the state, and to be able to see that as well.
And the kind of what we did with Archer is we, we helped them try to figure out those markets, and then they also picked their own markets based on their, you know, what they do. But it was all around this area, it wasn't like.
Are we going to look at Camden County, or pick Gerardo, or whatever, to some of the size counties? I mean, were we, were you guys happy with what Archer did, or did they do enough, or did they not do enough?
When we first took them, and when we, and we got all the elected officials to sign off, to agree to it, we had a committee that met with their representatives once a quarter, until the project was done, and they were in on it, they knew where it was going, and everybody did buy in on it. I mean, I think we lost it. It took us three or four years to get onto the grid, and then we never moved the grid, and we never kept those steps in between. We just went to the minimum midpoint maximum. We never kept those steps.
When it was, the twenty-year was?
It was in mind. And at that point, they did job descriptions for us, and to be quite honest, we've not done any job descriptions other than new positions that have come up since then. So, they did the job descriptions, plus came up with the market, plus came up with the grid.
Did you typically like the, the range that they gave you, the starting midpoint, whatever the other one was, or, I mean?
I think there was, it was a big range. I don't think it needed to be that big of a range. I mean, we were all, I mean, you know, you can go twenty, thirty thousand until you get to the other end. I really don't think that grid needed to be on the same position. It depends how many steps you want to put in between, you know, kind of like how many years.
I think some of the people they decided to compare us to also were a little on either end of the spectrum, too. I mean, Greene County was third in there. I'm like, let's compare to Greene County, and the huge, huge difference. I mean, of course, the range is going to be out here, if you're pulling a Greene County salary.
Well, they averaged them. They averaged all the markets together. So that's the way I understood it. I mean, you know, they did just, it's all a high one.
I don't know, I mean, I guess if we did something like that, I wouldn't mind seeing a range. But I still tend to think that we have a starting salary, and then we have, you know, either a multiplier or something, or a stipend, or whatever, that, that then you incrementally grow, and then, of course, you have a max for that job. You've got to max out at some point.
And that's a big source, but nobody ever wants to max out, but it needs to be a max out.
Well, I mean, you max out, now you're still eligible for COAs, and, you know, cost of living adjustments, but, you know, you can't, you can't pay somebody an exorbitant amount.
What do you do if you do that study and it comes in saying so much, you make it less?
You leave them at their pay until they catch up.
And then when somebody comes in and they rehire them, and they bring them back in at that same pay, or?
You still have that. You do have to have, the department has to buy in. I think you have. Different elected officials now that you did, that you didn't have then. Are there going to be some that try to use it? Yeah, probably, because of the budget process, you know, the budget's in there, the money's in their budget, they can spend it however they want.
So somebody starts, you don't have any discretion as to what they're going to be paid, if the study says this amount of dollars, that's what they get?
No, you'll have some discretion if you can say, well, they have three years of experience, they should go start here, not here. I envision it that way.
Who's going to be the ones that has the final say on that, on how that's judged?
I mean, obviously, you guys do budget-wise.
I think Boone County had some kind of administrative committee or something. It's not necessarily you three and the group that you appointed to review, you know. Here, here's who I want to hire, here's the things that they have, you review their information, and it's a yes or a no, it's not.
It's not a pay form, it's covered up and thrown under your, on your desk.
I just don't think that another Archer study is going to help, unless you're going to bound in it like every three years. There's things that change.
I think it just has, it has to be broader than what just our employees, I mean, it has to, it has to go beyond what we currently have. I mean, it's got to maybe throw some other stuff in there that we, maybe we don't have, just because, you know, what if we add somebody that's this type of position?
Well, and I think, too, you're going to have to have some sort of reevaluation. I mean, if you look at the county's financial stuff from two thousand and five to two thousand and fifteen, we've grown a huge amount. We've taken on way more than we had in two thousand and five. At some point, there are positions that, hey, you've taken on a ton more work than you did five years ago. At what point can you come and say, my position needs to be reevaluated because of this? At what point can you come and say, my position needs to be reevaluated because of this, this, and this that I now do that I didn't do before? I think you're gonna have to have some sort of review process in there that you can come and say, you know, all of my receptionists are still the same, but my secretary does this, this, and this more, can you reevaluate her position? I think you're gonna have to have some kind of review in there where people can request that that kind of thing happens.
I do, it's called budget.
That's why, that's why it's comfortable. I mean, that's what we created. So we have our, come and talk, if that's just my...
But I think, I think the budget process kind of fails too, though, when the assessor gives me a dollar amount in the budget, but doesn't tell me what that dollar amount is. What, he says I need fourteen positions, and you already have twelve. Okay, what happened to the one position that's in there already that you don't have filled? And then tell me, what do you need for these positions? So, the first time I heard that he wanted three more people was in here today. So, I think that there's a failure in the budgeting process, that that's the way you wanna do it, because they're not requesting it, they're not providing the information.
He had come to bore us a while back, talking about having, needing more appraisers.
Right, and, and I...
And we actually, I think, said, you know, put, put it in the budget.
Right, but I guess when we submitted the budget though, I get a, a total dollar amount, but what does that total dollar amount include? What?
Yeah, we need to have...
We need, we need to have a way to... I mean, the prosecutor's a good example. You asked him, what, what's the increase in your salary line? Well, it's because my people were money.
That's not to hire any more attorneys.
It's not to hire any more people, but is it a flat across the board amount? Is it so much to, is it just the attorneys? Is it just the four or five people? I mean, there's no plan there. It's just, here's my dollar amount that I want.
And that's why I think the grid and steps and, and would help that. I don't know, you know, but... They're still gonna ask for what they wanna ask for, and they're still not gonna say what they'll say, you know, but...
Archer's good, cause then you can say, well, this is what Archer says, and takes it off our plate. But then you look at Archer, you're going, this stuff is stupid, cause there were some things on it. I didn't agree with it all.
And I guess Archer, to me, created...
He was already four years old.
Have you never seen it?
Well, it kind of created an issue to where everybody thought that they were underpaid. So even the employees that were happy with what they were making and thought they were fine, once Archer came out, it was like, well, everybody's underpaid.
I've always underpaid too, I'll guarantee you that.
Prepare to market.
Babysitters should get paid more. Babysitters should get paid more.
My payment's pretty good.
We just have...
We should get extra, that.
Of course, yeah, we have turned the poor kids list, but I figure they are.
Take them down to the barn, let them run, kinda like a dog.
But like Kristen was saying, we were underpaid. We were not comparable to the city. We're not comparable to anything around this.
Uh, like the city where they're at right now.
Well, true. That's why I'm saying budget-wise, we didn't have the opportunity to do anything different. Hopefully, we won't continue to have the opportunity to do something different now.
Well, that's what I, I mean, I've seen the last two or three years that we've given COLAs and merit, and I mean, you know, we tried to hold everybody to the number of FTEs that were growing by, trying to give people more money. And so, I mean, I think that's a good plan. You know, it's not what everybody wants to hear, but we're still trying to raise the salaries so that we're more competitive and more marketable to, you know...
We're no better to, to the state or the city.
Well, yeah, we're able to give a raise, you know, where a lot of people aren't getting anything, but, I mean, that's, you know, the, the one thing that always concerns me is, you know, even a two percent raise or whatever, you know, you look at it, and it might be fifty cents an hour or whatever, it's a thousand dollars a year or something. It's like, they won't even notice that on their check. So, but, I mean, it's still, it's still a thousand bucks, I mean, so...
Considering what the state's doing, it's still lasting.
But it's still better, yeah, we're, I think we're, we're doing much better than the state or the city.
But I mean, I think we can continue that as long as we spend wisely.
I think we're frugal, we're very careful, and I think...
Well, and in the years when things were tight, the, there were people still giving raises where we didn't, you know? We knew things were tight and we couldn't afford it, so now that we've been frugal over those years, we now have the opportunity to build it back up.
I don't know, it might be worth looking at it again. I don't wanna pay a ton of money to do it, but, I don't know what that, that would cost, but... I don't know. I mean, what do we do at this point? I mean, we're, we're, yeah, we're fifty days, you know, or less, approving a budget, so, I mean, it's not gonna go into effect this year.
Yeah, I don't think that you have enough time at this point to do a study for sixteen. Now, if you wanted to decide now to do something for the seventeen budget, I think that that would...
For, and what I was gonna just suggest is putting something like that in professional services, and then looking at it after the first year, if that's something you guys would consider doing, or seeing what's out there.
Yeah, I mean, it's an argument. I think something that was done ten years ago, probably.
I know that the, the county auditors are kind of tossing these things around. We have some that have internally created their own gale, we have some that only do merit, we have some that are... We have one right now that actually has an outside firm reviewing. So, I mean, it's kind of gathered across the board with other first-class counties, first and second-class counties of how they all handle it. I mean, I don't think that any one of them will tell you right now that they have the answer about six things, but it's, it's different across the board. I think it's whatever we think everyone's gonna buy into and follow and...
It'd almost be nice if all counties did it, just, you know, gave their input to it.
Yeah, let us see what Calhoun, Boone, and some of these, Boone's kinda...
Something maybe Mac could do or something, but...
Compare us with Boone.
I think that's ours too, though, as far as the size of the county.
The grain is definitely...
Yeah, but there's a, you know, there's a county multiplier for every county in the state, and so, uh, which I didn't notice till I started looking at teachers' salaries, but, so there's a multiplier. St. Louis is over one, and some of them are point seven or point eight or whatever, and so, you know, there is a multiplier effect, like the cost of living.
A base, and then tighten it by the multiplier to figure out what your county would be.
Yeah, mhm.
I mean, there is, you can get the cost of living just in this area versus the whole state of one.
I mean, now, that's not to say that it's gotta be right on or whatever, I mean, there may be some adjustment services.
I think we should start paying less, so we quit stealing from Osage and Miller Counties.
And Mottol.
And get a Mottol. Let's get on all these workers from them counties that didn't work for them, we didn't pay so much.
Yeah, I was so, uh, Osage County, they always...
Hell sure. It's a word for it.
Okay, is there a motion to recess until four thirty?
Well, compared to what we wanna talk about on salaries, we gotta be competitive with Boone County. Everybody's gonna get about a twenty-five percent raise.
We'd never be able to afford that.
I know, but that's kinda what you're saying, is take all these other counties, take what they get paid. I think we just gotta use common sense and look at it now where we're at to keep people...
We went through that with the salary commission, and...
The salary commission? That's just for elected officials.
I know, but that's, you're still comparing...
A bunch of dingos, and you're talking about their own raise. This ain't talking about the people down at Trinity doing all the work.
But I think our, our department has some of the best places to start too.
I mean, I wasn't, I agree with him.
I mean, if you look at Roden Bridge, I mean, most of their people are happy, and the adjustments that they made last year were good adjustments. So maybe we need to have a review of each department to kind of see where the problem areas are. Maybe it's not every...
Probably the financial district.
Yeah.
Well, we can't blame clerk's office. The lens is sitting right there, so we're being recorded, everybody's...
We're just gonna leave it on that. It's all your fault.
Did you make a motion?
We haven't.
Do we got anything else?
Everybody's leaving it.
I can quit killing.
I don't think so.
I don't have time to do anything else now.
I bet we stand in recess until four thirty.
Second.